We are live.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the November 10th meeting of the East Hampton Town Board. Carol, would you please read the roll call?
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Leece.
Present.
Councilwoman Overby.
Here.
And Bradman.
Jeff, you're muted. He's here. I see his lips moving.
Supervisor Vance.
Present. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This morning's meeting will begin with a public session where any member of the public can call in and let us know their comments on any topic. We ask that you keep your minutes, your comments in three minutes or less. We have several agenda items today. We have the Long Island Commission for Aquifer Protection, discussion of open-loop geothermal, and that's going to be presented by Tim Motts and Jeff Sabo with Suffolk County Water Authority. I don't believe we'll be with us today, but also Ty Fuller is with us. That'll be followed by leaf blower legislation. Sylvia Overby, Councilwoman Overby is presenting that. The Fleet Efficiency Plan with Lauren Steinberg from the Natural Resources Department. The Second House Historic Landmark Designation with David Leece, Councilman David Leece, and a continuing discussion of the proposed proposal to address speeding and traffic safety issues on Old Orchard Lane, Middle Highway and Berryman Street, presented by Councilman Jeff Bragman. We'll have that followed by liaison reports and resolutions. And at this time, Michael, we'll go to public comment. Do we have any callers on the line?
Yes, we do. I'll unmute the first caller in queue right now.
Thank you very much.
Yes, hello. This is Bethany Menzies. I'm just here to listen in to Topic E, the continuation of the discussion about stop signs. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us, Bethany. And if you have comments at the end of that discussion, we'll take your comments if you want to tune back in.
Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, we don't have any other callers at this time.
Okay. All right. So what we'll do is we'll move forward with our agenda item and pause in between agenda items. If we get any callers on the line, we appreciate the public's patience as we work to get through the agenda, and we will take your calls in the order that we receive them. So as I said, I received a letter from the Long Island Commission on Aquifer Protection, a letter from Jeff Sabo, who's the chairman of that organization. That organization was created in 2013 to advocate for coordinated regional approach to protecting our groundwater resources. Jeff Sabo is also the CEO of the Suffolk County Water Authority. And today we have with us Ty Fuller and I believe Tom, Tim Motts, and Caitlin Hassan. I hope I'm saying that right. And at this point, I'll turn it over to you, Ty. You're presenting.
Hey, good morning, everyone. How are you? It's a pleasure to be here. Hopefully, everybody can hear me well. Obviously, with the social distancing measures, we are wearing masks within my office. But again, my name is Ty Fuller. I am the Lead Hydrogeologist and Director of Strategic Initiatives at the Suffolk County Water Authority. And what I like to discuss is geothermal heating and cooling systems and the impacts that it has on public water. To be clear, we're talking about a particular type of geothermal usage. We're not making a broad stroke about all types of geothermal usage, only that which affects us in particular. I'm going to share my screen and hopefully everything goes well. So a little bit about LyCap. And just bear with me, sometimes these things go a little bit slower than we anticipate. Just one moment, please. All right. So the Long Island Commission for Aquifer Protection, the organization that I'm a part of, it's been in place since 2013. And it was put together to address the concerns associated with the quality and quantity of the aquifer system within Long Island. It's composed of various professionals within the water industry, members of the DEC, United States Geological Survey, you know, political officials, scientists. It's a great consortium, and we've worked on a lot of different initiatives. We've created a State of the Aquifer Report, which comes out annually, which points out particular concerns within the aquifer system. We've also created a Groundwater Resources Management Plan, which is a blueprint to achieving the goals of that coordinated regional approach to the groundwater management. And within that plan, we came up with a list of priority recommendations. And one of those was associated with geothermal HVAC systems. And, you know, therein we wanted to establish guidelines to use water in geothermal systems. So in July of this year, our board, we voted to unanimously, you know, no longer approve applications for water systems that use open-loop geothermal systems. And I want to go into that a little bit in more detail because it is a particular aspect of geothermal usage that's unconventional and that does impact our groundwater supply. And it's specific to open-loop systems that use public water. You know, that's something that particularly on the East End, we're always mindful of, you know, due to the limited resource that's available on the East End. And we've also notified via letter, you know, Suffolk towns, and we've urged local governments to adopt their own geothermal codes. And this is one of the reasons why we have reached out to you all. So geothermal HVAC systems, you know, essentially geothermal technology, it's a technology that's used to heat and cool homes. It actually taps into the natural groundwater temperatures. Groundwater temperatures on Long Island, approximately 55 degrees. And it can utilize that temperature differential between the ground and the surface to provide either cooling over the summer or heating in the winter. It's considered an environmentally energy-efficient alternative to conventional HVAC systems. You know, this has been touted by, you know, the power companies in helping to reduce the electrical load, you know, particularly in the summertime. And, you know, again, you know, utilizing groundwater on the surface, you know, it appears to be, you know, very safe, straightforward type of system. So with geothermal, you have several types. I'm just pointing out two here. The closed-loop versus the open-loop system. So in essence, the closed-loop, it basically will just take, you know, water that's just being circulated throughout a system of coils. Now typically, you know, those coils would be buried in the ground. It requires a large surface area. It is prohibitively more expensive than open-loop systems. It can be three times the amount. So it's not something that you find often on Long Island due to the surface area requirements and the cost considerations. What most people use is open-loop geothermal systems. And in Southampton in particular, I believe they said about 30 to 40% of HVAC systems that are being installed are open-loop. And what the open-loop does is it actually uses two wells. You'll have one well that will supply the water, you know, that's tapped into the aquifer. It'll work its way through the home. It'll go through what's known as a heat exchanger, which, you know, takes that differential between, you know, groundwater temperature and the temperature of the air to provide the heating or cooling. And then that same water is discharged into a dispersion well. So it's a very straightforward process. It's not introducing any contaminants in there. If anything, any excess heat or cooling, you know, from that temperature change is put back into the water. And that's the only thing that causes any impacts. So this is just another diagram with the open-loop geothermal. It is a very straightforward thing. And to be clear, you know, this conventional open-loop system, you know, the Suffolk County Water Authority has no issue with. This is something that homeowners do. They'll install their own wells on site, you know, that will supply the water. They'll have a pump that's in place, and it'll just, you know, pump the water through a home, go through the heat exchanger. And then you'll have either one or several diffusion wells that take that excess water. Again, it has no impact to the aquifer overall, other than some temperature changes. You know, that's still being studied, you know, with the full impact of that. You know, I will point out that Shelter Island did ban geothermal systems, including open-loop, just due to their concerns, including the temperature differentials that can occur. So some of the issues that, you know, can happen with open-loop systems that I pointed out, it does require a lot of water, you know. And to point out, a typical 2,000-square-foot home requires about 15 gallons a minute or 21,000 gallons a day of constant water to meet the necessary heating, sorry, the cooling load or the heating load. Homes that are greater than 10,000 square feet can have geothermal systems that use an excess of 50 gallons per minute or 72,000 gallons per day. You know, that is a lot of water that's being used. It, the issue that we find is that, you know, on the East End, some homeowners, they don't use their own supply well due to the fact that they're close to the coast. And, you know, these supply wells, you know, could be impacted by seawater, which could corrode the system. They find the cheaper alternative is to connect to the public water supply system for this. And this is not something that, you know, geothermal systems were originally envisioned to do. So again, on the East End, we already have a limited capacity due to the fact that, you know, in certain sections, we can only access the shallow aquifer for water usage. And you're talking about homes, particularly, you know, in the East Hampton area or Southampton, all these other areas that, you know, are larger. They use a lot more water. And now it's creating this unnecessary burden onto the water supply. So what you're finding is that while you've offset the electrical load, you've actually increased the load on the water supply. So you've just changed the impact from one utility to another. And, you know, the impacts that that has on the water supply can be catastrophic because in order to keep up with that demand, we have to construct more wells. Those wells draw more water from the aquifer. And again, you know, that can strain the aquifer and result in issues like saltwater intrusion. So, you know, we treat and test our water to the highest level. You know, EPA establishes recommend guidelines for drinking water. New York State Department of Health has their own secondary guidelines. We have our additional guidelines at the Suffolk County Water Authority. So it just, it just seems such a wasteful practice to test and treat water to the highest levels of drinking water standards so that it's just continuously dumped throughout the day, you know, through a geothermal system, at least from a public water supply standpoint. So the Suffolk County Water Authority and the Long Island Commission for Aquifer Protection came up with a recommendation for towns and villages to explore the possibility of similar open-loop geothermal bans. Now, why do we ask you? You know, the fact is, is that, yes, we've put up ordinance in place, you know, at least we passed something through our board to ban geothermal systems, but we have no way of stopping it. The reason being is that the DDC, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, they permit wells that are greater than 45 gallons per minute. So some of these geothermal systems are less than that, you know, the supply capacity. So they don't have to permit these wells. So they, so, you know, just to even install the diffusion wells that are required, they can circumvent any permitting required for that. In addition, you know, a plumber, they may install, you know, that supply, you know, to provide that water for the geothermal system, and we're not made aware of those things. You know, we're looking out for permits that can come through the state, and then, you know, when we get notified of that, we'll address that accordingly. But it's possible that at the town level, you know, as people are requiring permits for the building apartment, they, you may become aware of these things. So, you know, this is something that, you know, we looked at that you could assist us with. You know, this could help curb the use of these systems and ensure that there's no surprises for us. And again, you know, as I pointed out, there are a lot of geothermal systems. There's estimate between 4,000 and 5,000 geothermal systems that are in use in Nassau and Suffolk County. 70% of those are open-loop systems. And again, we're not sure how many are using public water. But as I pointed out before, Shelter Island has banned geothermal systems outright to protect the aquifer from unnecessary impacts. And this is just a diagram that shows some locations of geothermal systems. You can see that you do have a large concentration within the Hamptons region. You know, again, it's definitely a prevalent thing that's used out here. So with that said, that is our concern, and we ask you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ty. One question comes to my mind immediately, and that is, just as a comparison, and I don't want to put you on the spot, did you have an idea as to what the average domestic water use is for a house, for an average household?
Average household is one gallon per minute. That's, that's, that's when you overall average it out. Even if you have like a sprinkler system, you know, it may jump it up at a peak period of time between, you know, five GPM, maybe a larger home might even be 10. You know, and again, that's an extreme example. But, you know, you're talking about, you know, geothermal systems continuously, 50 gallons per minute. And even with our public supply wells, you know, we're talking about public supply wells that, you know, on the East End, some of those are around 500 gallons per minute. So 10 homes with geothermal systems, you know, in excess of 50 GPM, that's the equivalent of one well. Whereas that one well could have supplied water for 500 homes and provided that. So it places an unnecessary demand, you know, because geothermal is continuous, that water usage throughout the day. It creates an unfavorable baseline. And I'm sure you're all aware, over the summertime, when you have these water restrictions, you know, that, or at least we're pointing out that, you know, we ask people to conserve. You know, it's one thing asking people to conserve with sprinkler systems, but geothermal systems are running continuously, so there's no way to assist with that.
Understood. I just did a little quick math, and it looked like those numbers work out to about 500,000 gallons a year for average domestic use. And the numbers you were putting out for the larger open-loop systems were like 26 million gallons just for one. And that's astounding, I think.
Astounding.
How fresh is, astounding, especially when you think how fresh is our drinking water resource here is with a sole source aquifer. It just seems incredibly wasteful.
I'm glad you pointed that number out, not to interrupt. There was a story written in Newsday several years ago, and they came up with the same figure you did. One of our largest users on the East End uses an excess of 20 million gallons, which far exceeds what a hospital uses. You know, that, that tells you, you know, this, with this one system. So, and again, I just want to point out, you know, an open-loop system conventionally used, we have no issue with. It's just the one that uses public water. That is an unnecessary strain on our water supply.
So I guess my next question is, since Suffolk County Water Authority provides public water to much of the South Fork now, especially with concerns of groundwater contamination in certain areas, is there any plans to start charging, I guess, an extra amount of money once you get over what would be domestic water use and having a surcharge for high-use types of properties?
Yes, actually, in 2019, we established, our SCWA board established a tiered billing rate. So people that are customers that use an excess of 75,860 gallons in a quarter, they are charged a premium rate for water usage. And I want to point out that that, that water usage amount per quarter, the typical homeowner does not usually exceed that. It's people that, you know, that we find that are, you know, using an extraordinary amount. Those are the ones that exceed that pressure. So that is in place. You know, that has resulted in, anecdotally at least, some savings measures. But yes, we do feel that they should pay their fair share because those infrastructure improvements that we have to pass off to our customers are usually the result of those higher water users that are putting unnecessary strain to our resource.
Are there other questions from board members at this time? So we have received some draft legislation from LyCap. That's been circulated to the board. I think we will have a future discussion and consideration of moving forward on potential legislation to address this issue. I thank you for taking the time to make this public presentation and help us to better understand the issues, you know, at this particular moment regarding the safety and supply of our most precious resource that is drinking water.
Thank you. Thank you for providing me the time to speak to you all.
Thank you very much, Ty. We'll, we'll move on now to our second agenda item, provided we don't have any callers. Michael, do we have any callers on the line?
We do not have any new callers on the line. That previous caller is still on hold.
Understood. Okay. The next topic is leaf blower legislation. And Councilwoman Sylvia Overby, who's also liaison to the Energy Sustainability Committee, is shepherding this legislation for. We have had some preliminary discussions about further restriction of the use of leaf blowers and trying to transition away from gas, diesel, leaf blowers to cleaner electric and somewhat quieter motors. I know that myself and my fellow board members have fielded numerous emails, I would say, amounting to hundreds of people at this point, who have weighed in on this topic and feel that the leaf blowers have really become way too pervasive and have really, in many cases, destroyed the quality of life of many residences throughout the town. And I know that during the height of the pandemic, when everything else was relatively quiet, that they really stuck out as a sort of. But without any further ado, I will turn it over to Sylvia.
Yeah, I just want to remind, we've had several work sessions on this. One was a presentation by Lauren Steinberg from the Natural Resources Department about the harmful effects of gas and diesel leaf blowers. We've had, or Peter just alluded to how many people and emails he's gotten. I've gotten lots and lots and lots of emails. And I also worked with the Acabonic Protection Committee, who is, has 400 members, and they have sent us a recommendation as well to look at this legislation. So want to thank John Jolnicki for putting this together. We aren't the first in the area to consider this. The East Hampton Village has done this, and so has Southampton Village. And the board should have, and in that original presentation, was also those two pieces of legislation that had been passed by the, by the two villages, East Hampton and Southampton. So, and John can work with me on this as well. I know he has it in front of him. We're going to start with a new chapter in the town code, which is under landscaping and gardening. And the first part of the legislation talks about findings of why the town is considering this type of legislation. And if you've got any questions, I don't know if you want us to go through it and read it, or how would you like this presented?
If you'd be helpful, just go through it. I just note that in the findings, the very first paragraph talks about, you know, the reason we're interested in doing this and encouraging green landscaping practices, promoting public health, reducing emissions, and deterring unlicensed landscapers. Probably we should add reducing noise in that first paragraph. I know that it goes on and mentions noise later on as well, but might consider adding the reduction of noise in that first paragraph on findings.
Yeah, and as the villages have done, the two villages have put it under their noise ordinance, actually, is where you can find their, their legislation. So I think that's a good addition, John, to put reduction of noise in that first paragraph. The second paragraph is, starts out with, based on this research and information from various sources, the town board finds that certain commercial landscaping and gardening activities may pose risk of noise, odor, pollution, and otherwise disturb the public health and the welfare of the town residents. Scientific studies have been presented to the board indicating that emissions from gas-powered leaf blowing equipment can cause deleterious health effects for those in the vicinity of their use. Further, the use of this equipment causes an unreasonable amount of noise that is detrimental to the quiet enjoyment of neighboring residences. So again, that's under findings. Section, that was paragraph B. Paragraph C, the current town code, though requiring home improvement contractor's licenses for commercial landscapers who also do installations of outdoor improvements such as walkways, patios, and similar structures as part of their service, does not require a license for commercial landscapers who only engage in property maintenance, such as cutting lawns and raking and disposing of leaves. However, the town requires a mechanism to contact commercial landscapers working within the town to assure that they are aware of the restrictions and limitations placed upon such activities by this local law and to adequately enforce the provisions of this code. It's a little dense here, but the understanding, I hope, by the town board and the community. And do you have any questions on C? Okay, so then section, paragraph D, this chapter, adopted pursuant to the authority of town law, municipal home rule of the state of New York, will limit the use of gas and diesel-powered leaf blowers and create a licensing requirement for commercial landscapers engaged in property maintenance. And the next section is definitions, where we define a commercial landscaping business.
Well, can I just ask a question? So with D, is it just, so it's just that this just refers to the licensing requirement?
Paragraph.
Commercial landscapers. Okay, I got it.
You mean C? Yeah. Well, the idea is that you want a way to, to know who is utilizing the leaf blowers and that they're licensed, we have a way to contact them. So the idea was to, if you have a home improvement contractor's license already, you could get one of these licenses. You wouldn't be charged for it, but you still have to obtain it. If you're not a home improvement contractor at this point, you would then need to get a license as a landscaper. Yeah.
So definitions, we're going to define commercial landscaping. Define the commercial landscaping license. We define gardening. We define gas and diesel-powered leaf blower. Define groundkeeping. Define holidays. Because we are going to talk about holidays later. We define a landscaper and we define landscaping. And the only change that I would have was one that was, we had an email exchange with John and with Lauren, that a landscaper, an individual firm, corporation, or other entity performing commercial landscaping services. And I think we need to add there, any person over the age of 18. We're not trying to put anyone who is doing this as, as a, as a business of, you know, if you're a kid mowing lawns, this is not something where you have to go and get a commercial landscaping license. So this would define that a landscaper is anyone over the, any person over the age of 18 engaged in this business. Are there any questions?
Not so far. I might have some comments about holidays later on.
Ditto.
As defined or what we're, what, what, well, anyway, we'll get there.
I would add a few, but we can talk about that in a minute.
Okay. Then the next section is license required with exceptions. With, find, wait a second. So on page two. find, wait a second, so on page two, page three. Three paragraphs for exceptions. And again, do you want to read those exceptions, Peter? You want those read?
Yeah, go ahead and read.
All right. So A is it shall be unlawful for any person to engage in or practice the trade or business of the commercial landscaping within the town without obtaining and having enforced a commercial landscaper's license pursuant to the requirements of this chapter. Paragraph B is commercial landscaping work may be performed without a license by the owner, less see or occupant of the property upon which the work is being performed, or an employee of the owner, less see or occupant, provided that such employee does not provide commercial landscaping for other properties within the town and does not receive compensation for such commercial landscaping work. Paragraph C is the limitations contained herein as they apply to the use of gas or diesel-powered leaf blowers applies to all use of such equipment, whether performed by a licensed person or legally unlicensed person under this chapter. The next section, section four, is application, procedure, fee, expiration, and decals. Again, we'll start with chap, with paragraph A. Any commercial landscaper applying for a license shall file with the town clerk a written application upon forms to be furnished by the town clerk. Commercial landscapers who also hold a valid and current home improvement contractor's license issued by the town of East Hampton shall be exempt from the commercial landscaper's licensing filing fee. Proof of a home improvement contractor's license and commercial landscaping license shall be available on site and shall be produced upon request of any person lawfully requesting production of the license, including any governmental official or employee of the town. Paragraph B, in addition that the landscaper uses or intends to use regulated chemicals or pesticides, proof of application, New York State DEC certificate must be submitted. And C, in addition that the landscaper uses or intends to apply fertilizer products, proof of a certificate of cert, of completion of a Suffolk County Nitrogen Fertilizer Turf Management Course must be obtained. And D, each applicant for a commercials license, a landscaper's license shall pay a non-refundable filing fee with the application. Such fee shall be set and amended from time to time by resolution of the town board. The town board may provide for a reduced filing fee for any applicant who can provide receipts showing that five or more pieces of landscape gardening equipment powered by electric or battery mowers have been purchased by the applicant.
So if I could just make a comment there. I, I understand that we want to encourage people to transition away from the gas and diesel blowers to electric. I guess my only question is, the down, the town board may provide the reduced filing fee. What mechanism would that be? Would that maybe be better situated in the clerk's purview as she's the one issuing the license? And is verifying all the other aspects of the application?
I ask a question too?
Absolutely, Carol.
Would this additional license for, for a contractor who already has a home improvement license and sets a two-year license run concurrent?
That's a good question. I think the legislation had talked about a three-year term on.
It does.
I think we need to keep it the way it is. I'm doing, you know, close to 80,000 of them a year right now. To try to keep track of all that would just be a nightmare.
So you're suggesting that we make it a two-year application fee and permit? Or?
I don't know. I guess I'd have to think about it, but I want it to be able to run concurrent with the other license.
Yeah.
There'll be too many different.
I understand what you're saying, but if it's a two-year versus the others, if they do it separately, it's three-year.
Right. So then I would rather have a two-year.
Right.
And then what is, I mean, you're putting quite a burden on the town clerk then also in order to demonstrate that they've got, you know, five or more pieces of landscape gardening equipment.
Really, the idea is that you guys would legislate that, like you do with other fee resolutions. You do a resolution saying if you buy, you know, a certain number of pieces of equipment, then the fee could be, you know. That part, I just want to be clear, you know, that it's not the town board that's going to be checking the receipts then. No, no, but setting the policy, it'll be the board, so. I, I don't object to that policy thing, you know, to incentivize that transition is, is a good thing and helpful and to acknowledge that transition.
So can we just insert the town board may provide a policy? For a reduced filing fee? Or may set.
Or may adjust the fee schedule for the applications to reflect a, a reduction for those who meet that standard. We could do that. And then, but you know, you're gonna have to think about what, you know, is, is buying a certain number, five or more? I mean, if you've got 50 pieces of equipment, five or more, and you bought it, you know, how, how recent have you bought it? These are all factors you're gonna have to think about because, you know, if all you have is five and you bought them in the last year or two, that might be great. But if you bought them five years ago and you've got 50 units, but you bought five, you know. You, you, we want to talk about, you have to kind of balance what you think is going to be appropriate. And I don't know what the reduction would be. I mean, really, you want to incentivize them to buy new equipment. That's the whole concept there, so. I don't know. That's, that's just something you'll have to, so we can definitely provide here that you can just do with my resolution, set the policy, sure.
I, I'm just concerned about the burden you're putting on the town clerk to have to. Whether they're gonna bring in receipts for five pieces of equipment and how they demonstrate that it's, they bring the warranty card. I mean, I just, I, I, it's noble, the, the intent. I just don't know if it's practical.
I'm gonna check it out.
You could do a one-time offset. You could say, you know, if you buy electrical equipment within, you know, the year that you're paying the fee, you can have a one-time offset against that that you've seen. And just leave it at that.
And some of these folks already have the electrical equipment because they're, they're already, their, a bulk of their business is in the village. So they've already made the investment.
Yeah. Well, then you wouldn't want to penalize those people already kind of did it in advance, you know?
Right.
Well, you could give them a one-time offset. You could give, you know, if you have four or more pieces of equipment, you give them a one-year offset. And then going forward, if somebody buys in the next year, buys three of them or four of them, then you give them a, a one-year offset, you know, against that year that they were buying. So at least that way, folks that already have it in the first year could get an offset.
Okay.
It does put a lot of burden on Carol. I don't know how she feels.
Really complicating things.
I know, going through those invoices.
So, so let me work with John and Lauren and even Paul Muniz, who's on this call, or on this Zoom meeting. As someone from the Energy Sustainability Committee, who is the vice chair and who has a landscaping business. This, let, let us work through that. Okay?
Sure.
Okay, so then the next, this is where it says that the licensees are for three years following the year in which they have been issued. So here we also need to work on coordinating it so that it makes sense.
Right.
For Carol, okay?
To match the, you have a license. So you, yeah, you're gonna make a two-year contracted license, maybe it just should be a two-year license. Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so paragraph F, landscaper's license pursuant to this chapter shall at all times keep a copy of the license in their vehicles that the landscapers use in the town at all times, but produce a copy upon request by any person lawfully authorized to request the same, including any government official or town, or employee of the town.
That's, that's similar to what we do for the other landscaping and contracted licenses of the way, right?
Yes, yes.
The, the question I had about the, the licensing is, are we going to be requiring insurance for landscape maintenance companies? I believe we currently do for contractors as well as other, the other class of landscape licensees.
Right now, I have a lot of companies that, that's all they do is landscape, and they're still licensed. They only mow, and they're licensed, and they put in insurance.
Is their license as contractors?
Yes.
Okay. So Carol, we need to include you in on all of these conversations that we're having under par, under this paragraph D and paragraph E.
Please.
Yeah, thanks. So the next section, section five, which is under regulations. So paragraph A, no homeowner or tenant performing groundskeeping or landscaper or other persons in control of performing and providing commercial landscaping service shall engage in the following or permit any person who is within their employ to, or control to, one, blow, rake, place, spill, dump, or otherwise deposit any leaves, grass, garbage, refuse, cuttings, wood, oil, pesticides, or other materials or debris from one property onto any public property, including but not limited to street sidewalks, rice of way, or upon the private property of another person within such other person's permission.
I can just add here, if I, if I may, that there are multiple situations where maintenance crews continually dump lawn waste and debris in what they call the woods. And that could be a nature preserve, that could be somebody else's private property where they have a scenic easement. I know from personal experience over the 30 years that I am continually trying to educate maintenance crews that they shouldn't be dumping piles of leaves and grass cuttings and, and old dead plants that they've discarded in a scenic easement. That's completely contrary to how that's supposed to be disposed of. And maybe, I'll just make a suggestion, that maybe as part of the licensing that the people have to attest to understanding what the proper disposal of, of debris is as part of that licensing. Just a suggestion.
Okay.
I think it's an opportunity to educate that it's not okay just to stop on the roadside where there's woods and dump a bunch of debris.
Do you want that in the legislation?
I think it, 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 it doesn't need to be in the legislation. I'm suggesting that it be part of the application.
Okay.
You know, paragraph just basically stating proper disposal of debris and that they attest to it, to understanding that. Just to see. And again, appropriate places the application.
Okay, I've got that. Number two, remove leaves, clippings, or other yard waste in a truck, dump truck van, or other motor vehicle, trailer, container, or other towable device without securing a tarpaulin or other cover to prevent spillage. This is something that the, is, I think already in our code, correct, John? That we want.
It is, it is. State highway law as well. Right, right. Loads have to be. Reminder to have though, for people.
Yeah, so that's great. Spill or dump any oil, gasoline, or other petroleum products within the town. That's number three under paragraph A. Number four, fill or refill any machinery or equipment with any fuel or lubricant except over a drop cloth or other device designed to catch and retain any accidental spillage. And five, dispose of grass, leaves, branches, and other ground, uh, groundskeeping waste by burning in violation of chapter 141 of the town code. So this is all reminders more than anything, but I appreciate, you know, reminding as part of the education where these leaves and clippings and things can actually be disposed of. Under regulations, paragraph B, all commercial landscaping shall be performed in accordance with the laws, ordinances, rules, and regulations of the United States, the state of New York, the county of Suffolk, and the town of East Hampton. Paragraph C, no walk-behind leaf blower shall be utilized upon any property within the town of East Hampton, exclusive of any property in any incorporated village unless such property is greater than one-half acre in area.
Technology changes on that?
I just had a kind of a question on that. It seems kind of arbitrary in a way. I guess the idea is that you don't want walk-behinds on smaller properties? And is that because they're like exponentially louder than the backpack models or? What's the rationale there? That's my understanding. I know Lauren, I don't know if you have any more specific info on those, but my understanding is these are the really big machines.
Yeah, Lauren and Paul might want to weigh in on this.
Then I think, you know, by, by limiting it to half acre, well, you know, you might have referred to the lawn area. I don't know. Are you gonna enforce it? You're gonna have to go around and know the property size or?
That's really not much of a limit either, because half acres are basically our smallest zoning area. Are they really?
It is.
I, I haven't seen too many of these walk-behind blowers.
I remember my mother-in-law had one that used to go up to, you know, three village, you know, weekends, and I'd, I'd help her by clearing her property, and she had a walk behind. It's basically like a lawnmower motor with a big fan on the front of it. And I don't recall it being, you know, any louder than a backpack model, but I don't know. Maybe they're talking about a much, much larger type of blower.
I've seen larger ones now that, that actually are self, you stand on, they're self-driven, you know, self-propelled blowers. And I think there's even ones that attach to small, uh, smaller, I'll say John Deere small lawnmower tractors, 100 series, then to. I just want to know if technology. Electric, can we bring that back in?
Yeah, so.
Do you have?
Paul or Lauren?
I just think in most cases, they're overkill, they are louder, and you essentially don't need one on a half an acre or smaller property, is what we were trying to say in that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but to David's point, what if the technology changes?
And what?
And you have a quiet electric blower that's a walk behind or?
Yeah.
Something like that.
After a man.
Yeah, right, right now, and Paul, correct me if I am wrong. There isn't an electric walk behind, so maybe we could add in something that alludes to that, that when the technology advances, that the walk-behinds would be allowed if they're electric.
Maybe it's no walk behind gas or diesel, whatever, leaf blowers.
Are these in extensive use among the people that do this work?
A large, very large estates, you'll see them mostly, or maybe some, some, they're expensive, they're much more expensive. You gotta store them, they don't store as easily in your garage, it'll take up more floor space. But the larger, larger estate use, you'll see them.
Maybe we should, you know, narrow it down to much larger lots, like three to five acre lots. I mean, do you need it on a one-acre property?
I, I got a half acre, man.
Walk behind, David. Honestly, I haven't seen one.
It could be greater than one.
Yeah. And then again, you know, we, we have clearing restrictions, and I think most lots, you know, 50% is the most, it's cleared. So if you have a half acre, it's really, you're not gonna get more than a quarter acre of cleared space in many cases. And that's gonna be partially covered with the structures, so. I, I don't know, it seems, I bump it up.
So, so I'm hearing a couple of things. One of them is that maybe this paragraph doesn't need to be there at all. And if it is there, I think Paul recommended, instead of saying, property is greater than half an acre, change it to greater than one acre. But, you know, then there was also the suggestion of until technology, or unless technology catches up with it and they become electric. So I, I don't know, there, let us talk about this, but it may be that the easiest thing is just to eliminate paragraph C altogether.
Well, no, because that, then that would allow them to be used during the summer season. Uh, so it might be, you know, all gas, just pretty much make all gas leaf blowers. And maybe one definition, if they're either handheld or walk-behinds, make, put that in the definition.
Just make them subject to the restrictions that you have.
Yeah, because you might have a gas, you have a definition of gas and diesel powered leaf blower. Maybe we can, you know, put a language in there, handheld or walk behind.
Okay.
Haven't seen them, you know, in common usage on, on smaller lots at all. I don't.
So, so let's go down to paragraph D, which says, no more than two leaf blowers of any power source, handheld, backpack, walk behind, or any combination thereof, shall be used at any one time on any property exclusive of property in any incorporated village unless such property is greater than one half acre in area. So again, we're just for a half acre lot, you can't, you have two guys using leaf blowers, you know, clearing your, clearing your property.
Not more than two.
Yeah, yeah, it says more than
That's like, if you have three, then the noise is reduced by a third in duration. I don't know. I mean, think about that as well.
Okay.
Does the, does the additional blower make it that much louder?
Does Southampton and East Hampton have this provision?
No, I don't, I'd have to look, I don't believe so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember seeing it there.
They're strictly noise, you know, noise based. In some ways, it might be an advantage actually to have more, because you're gonna have a shorter duration of use on the property.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you from anecdotal experience that when you have two leaf blowers going, it's way more intrusive.
It's pretty
It says like twice as loud?
And the thought process
Pretty loud.
I think when you've got to, and my neighbor, his guys use two leaf blowers, it's it's, it's coming from more directions. It's almost like it's, you know, you've got speakers out there that are coming you know, you can't get away from them.
It's like a swarm of angry bees.
I think the thought process behind this was also to eliminate the emissions. I know the noise is a big concern, but we also be mindful that it's the emissions. And three is a lot more than two, as far as emissions go.
Well, the duration is also
But yeah, because it's gonna take what it's gonna take to get the job done, right?
Then, then, you know, it's emissions over time. But I, but I understand what, what Councilman Braggman's saying, that the overall noise may be louder, more annoying with multiple motors going.
Yep.
Revving, revving differently than each other.
I just want to add that this these conditions for the half acre properties is included in the Village of Southampton's legislation. That's where we that's where we got it from, as part of the recommendation from the Energy Sustainability Committee.
Okay, thank you, Lauren.
And, okay, so we're still on regulations. Paragraph E, no gas or diesel generators may be utilized to power electric leaf blowers at any time.
The workarounds.
Yeah, so, that, well, that, I mean, unfortunately, John, I almost, that is, this is exactly what the workaround is right now. When I go out and I've actually talked to a lot of landscapers right now, the biggest issue with electric leaf blowers right now is their duration of time for their properties. And what they're finding right now is that they'll put a generator inside of their trailer and drive around with a generator that's on to power the batteries, but the batteries cost so much. You know, can they put solar on top of their trailers? Yes, it's an added expense. But, you know, you know, the unknown truth is that you're having generators on the, on the street right now with carbon emissions and combustibles in a car, because this is, this is exactly what's happening. I mean, Paul, you might be able to answer that better than I, but that, when I started asking individuals in industry, this is, this is something that it's just, it's an unknown truth. Now, I talked about truth, sorry.
It is, but maybe now that you bring that good point up is, we should address that, because that's actually a very big concern. Because you have electric equipment with generators which have gas, that's a big concern there for safety.
Correct, but then, then it goes to the point is, then what does the contractor do to get the duration of the electric battery life? What are, what are the options?
That's why I'm saying, this is, this is not only to ban, but also to hopefully change the culture. You know, it can be done, you just gotta, you know, find and get creative doing different things. I mean, I attach a sweeper, which is mechanical, and I attach it to my battery powered mower, and then that's how I pick up leaves. I do it, you know, more often. But that's how I keep control of the leaves on big properties that are open.
Just plug into the, the customer's electric and be charging while you're there doing your cleanup to recharge extra batteries for the next job. Seems like
I have solar panels on the shop where I use, so I, you know, that's how I do it. But I guess most people won't have that option, but it is an option.
You travel with extra batteries?
I have seen some landscaping trailers that have panels attached on the roof to charge electric batteries as well.
Yeah, so that's another option, yep.
I mean, if, you know, we can't allow gas or diesel generation, it kills the whole idea, kills a major part of the motive for the legislation.
I agree with that, Jeff. I'm just letting you know, like, this is what I've sort of heard entirely from how individuals are are powering up their, they're using fossil fuels to power up their electric blowers to get the duration, so it's a little bit of a catch.
Yeah, and, you know, until we go a hundred percent renewables with our power grid, you know, that's, that's how the electric's getting charged too, unless you're like Paul and has solar he's using specifically for that. But I, I think it's important for us to try to understand how the industry is currently operating and to try to address the needs of the industry and be helpful and try to understand, you know, what the constraints are of the technology and, and the business itself and try to find a path that's not punitive and to encourage and to help the industry make that change. And so a lot of that's going to rely on us understanding how the industry operates and what those needs are as well. So I, I think it's, it's I agree with, with Jeff that, you know, rolling up and using electric blowers that are charged with a diesel generator on site is kind of counterproductive to the overall goal here. So your point's well taken, and I just think, you know, we need to just understand how, how businesses can overcome that, that problem.
Yes.
So moving on then to the next section, which is gasoline or diesel powered leaf blowers. And this is now going to be the timeframes that when they can and can't be used. No landscaper, homeowner, business owner, or municipal employee shall operate any gas or diesel powered leaf blower. And one, during the period from May twentieth to September twentieth of any year. Two, from September twenty-one to May nineteenth of any year before eight AM or after six PM on any weekday. From September twenty-one to May nineteenth of any year before nine AM or after five PM on Saturdays. And again, September twenty-first to May nineteenth of any year on Sunday or on a federal or New York state holiday.
I, I have a question on this. What, what, what is the, is, what is the purpose of this? Is this to let people amortize the equipment they have? Or why are we allowing it in the off-season like this?
The, the power, from what I've been told, Jeff, is that the power that is necessary to get the leaf litter off the ground, no matter leaves are about to fall on us up here right now, the next couple of weeks, is not necessarily as, as much available with a battery held blower as compared to a, you know, a gas powered blower. So I think that's where I, you know, in following the Village of East Hampton or Southampton. But it's the density of the leaf litter to get off, and that's
Yeah, I think it's a somewhat incremental approach. I mean, I think, you know, the, the summer season, you know, it's warmer weather, more people are trying to enjoy their backyards and outdoors, and it's certainly much more annoying. As the weather gets colder, and as David said, the, the leaf matter coming out of the trees right now, at a certain point, it is a substantial amount of leaves to do a cleanup. I personally have a blower which I use maybe twice a year. I use it in the fall for cleanup and then after a long winter to do the, the spring cleanup. One day and I'm done. There are plenty of properties where if there are two leaves on the lawn, the crew's blowing the two leaves off the lawn.
Yep.
And, you know, that's that, that, that's something else entirely, but it's hard to legislate, I think. And it's important to try and do this incrementally. So I think that's part of the reason that we're looking at doing a window where there's no use, doing a window where there is use, but with further restricted hours.
That, that's correct, and I just want to add that the spring cleanups and the fall cleanups bring the most, you know, weight as far as the debris. And in the summer months, from the dates Sylvia mentioned, it's just pretty much glass, grass clipping. So you don't need the heavy duty gas blowers. But again, this goes back to, hopefully this only, not only changes the mindset of the landscaper, but also the client who requests some clients request the properly manicured, not one leaf on my property scenario. So I think this will hopefully take us in that direction.
Yeah, clearly takes us in that direction. I'm just wondering, you know, if the heaviest time is spring and fall.
Right.
And you can use an electric blower in spring, I don't know why we're unleashing
Can't, because the, the technology's not there. So even if I charge my, all my batteries with my solar, my batteries won't suffice for the cleanups I have to do in one given day.
In sprint, in spring and fall.
Spring or fall, yeah, spring or
Oh, okay, okay.
It's the shoulder season cleanups that require the heavier powered machines.
And that's why we also include in that, those dates that Sylvia gave, if there's a severe storm, then that's
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that. That make, that makes sense to me, because I know the debris is heavy. Yeah, I guess part of it is just people's attitude toward their, their property. I mean, I, I've gotten to the point where I, I ask, you know, I have my lawn cut, and I ask them not to use the leaf blowers. First of all, it freaks the dogs out, quite frankly, and it's, it's really noisy. And I don't, you know, I don't know, I live in the woods and it doesn't really make a huge difference.
Can I, can we just look at A four? The prohibition, so that's directed at homeowners, right? Because for the most part, commercial landscapers aren't working Sundays and federal holidays. So we're asking homeowners, so if I, you know, work six days a week and my only day off is Sunday, and I have a diesel or gas powered, you know, leaf blower, I can't, I can't, you know, work in my yard.
Does this just address the commercial though, and not?
No, it says
No, it says homeowner. So I, and I know that the village has, they do it, they don't have a prohibition. They just limit the hours. I, I'm just not comfortable personally with, with a prohibition. Because it's directed at a homeowner. And, and maybe over time, obviously homeowners will purchase electric equipment, but, you know, for those that haven't, I just have a concern for hardworking families that have, you know, one day off a week, and that could be Sunday, that they can't work in their yard and clear the leaves.
Okay, so, so your suggestion is
They can do it on Saturday.
They might be working, I think Abby's point is they work six days a week. What if, what if you're in that situation?
Yeah.
You know, I yeah, the idea of having one day a week without the sound of leaf blowers is very appealing, I think, to many. But I, I understand Abby's point, and I think about, you know, my own work schedule, that was the one little window of time I had to, to do things around the house. I might be not happy about not being able to do it on that particular day, but, you know, I think you know, the overall impact of not having is pretty appealing.
If I could chime in on that, I, I think if we do have that in, it, it'll work itself out, because if my neighbor is working on Sunday, I'm not going to call on him if he's using his blower for maybe an hour tops, but it's so much different if there's a crew there. Then it'll really affect my, you know, peace on a Sunday.
Well, how many, how many crews work on Sundays? I mean, commercial landscapers. I mean, the folks that I know that are in this business, that's their one day off.
So they're at home blowing.
That just
They, they don't do their own, they've got their crew come by. You know.
I mean
I, I'm asking Paul, I mean
Make a distinction between commercial and residential homeowner use on a, on a Sunday to start with at least. Maybe that's a fair compromise, I don't know.
I, I think that a lot of commercial crews do work on Sunday, especially like, I think it was last week, we had three days of heavy rain during the week, and some people made it up on the weekend, Saturday and Sunday.
And particularly leading up, particularly leading up to July fourth weekend. There's such a push to get everything leading up to that, but I, I
Well, by then you're in electric. By July fourth, you're in electric. You're not in gas and diesel powder.
Understood, I'm just saying, there's such a lead up if you, if you catch it early. I, I I understand the need for this, I support it. I, I'm just not supportive right now doing this to the homeowner. With A, I, I agree with the, with the landscaper putting the effects in for landscapers right now. That would be for all the timeframes on there. I think the, one of the first things I would want to make sure is that we have restrictions on the times of days, which I, which I'm pretty much in line with this. I, I can't see putting this against the homeowner yet. Let's see what type of relief we get from bringing it to the commercial industry instead of the homeowner. And maybe we can, we can re, readdress it. Next one is municipal employees, that's a given. But it means also for the town of East Hampton, we're gonna have to do capital investments into our equipment. We just actually did. We, we just recently received our first electric lawnmower. But I know we have to do that with our blowers. I, I've talked, I talked with, I've built into grounds. They're ready, ready for that, putting those numbers forward for our capital investment. But municipal employee, is that, we also have to say, is that going to be a catchall for the state, the county? Also, what about fire departments or school districts too? So I just wanted to bring that into the, into the conversation here, but, but primarily out of this right now, homeowners. I, I, I love my landscapes, you know, I just planted hundreds of bulbs and did that and too, and I'm, I'm very acute to not, not using a blower. I like scratch raking. I, I think it's, it's well deserved, but I wouldn't mind phasing this approach in to get to the ultimate, ultimate goal, which is the first of all, it's going to be protecting our environment.
So do board members feel that perhaps compromising that would be to allow homeowners only on Sundays with the restricted hours?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think restricted hours are essential, and I just want to throw in a gratuitous comment that I'm not at all sure, despite our high aesthetic level in East Hampton, that leaf blowers are even necessary, but
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's an argument to be made that certain times of the year, they, they, they are, but again, you know, the grass cuttings and the two or three leaves on the landscape, that you have to listen to a leaf blower for twenty minutes if you're joining property, and then twenty more minutes at the one next to that one, and twenty more minutes at the one down the street. That's that gets old, especially in your, our denser neighborhoods, and I think that's why both East Hampton Village and South Hampton Village have already gotten out ahead of us with this type of legislation, because I can remember years ago being on, on a job, construction job in the village that I was, that I had, and wearing ear protection for the cutoff saws and the nail guns, and it wasn't good enough protection from the leaf blowers that worked on those eight acre lots the entire day, every day, every week for the whole length of the job. So you know, I, I think, I think we're headed in the right direction. We, we might want to talk about the hours. You know, the weekdays, eight AM to six PM, does the board agree that that's Um, you know, the weekdays, eight AM to six PM to support agree that that's reasonable, I believe, uh, right now under the noise ordinance. That's, uh, that type of activity is from, is it seven thirty AM to seven thirty PM, John?
Seven. I don't, it's seven or seven thirty.
You want to make them, uh, yeah, I think it's, I thought it was seven.
Trying to recall what the current code is on, on that activity noise.
The, uh, the noise, the regulations run seven AM to seven PM and then there's a different level, uh, from seven PM on.
Right.
Um, and then, you know. So you could, you want to have that match that? You want to kind of mirror that some timeframe or?
You don't, the idea is to further restrict and the, and proposal at hand is to shave an hour off each end of that, that window. I don't know. Does the board feel that that's appropriate or?
I'm fine with that.
I think it's okay. I mean, I'd like to shave some.
Eight to six, uh, from September twenty first to May nineteenth. And then on Saturdays and, uh, for commercial nine AM to five PM. Uh, and residential on Saturdays, on Sundays residential only from the same hours, nine to five.
Nine to five, okay.
But the, I mean, the village has, the village has nine AM to three PM. And I, I mean, I'm.
So we that on, on Saturdays then?
Sundays and federal holidays, East Hampton Village is nine AM to three PM. It's allowed.
Uh, I like that.
I.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Uh, you have to go nine to five on.
No.
Tasting all your leaves.
But no commercial on Sunday, residential from nine to three.
Okay.
Ten to three, what's, what's the course?
I'm fine. I'd rather, I'd rather, I vote for sleeping later on Sunday. Come on, tell the truth.
No, no leaf blowers in four eleven.
So are we changing Saturday to eight AM? Is that what you want to do? I, I'm not, are you, we kidding?
No, no. I, I think that the recommendations go the other direction. What was it? Ten to three? Kathy?
Nine to three in the village.
Nine to three.
On Sundays.
On Sundays and federal holidays. Right.
And Saturday means nine to five?
Yeah, they're more restrictive. Their, their Saturdays are eight to three. But I'm, I mean, I'm fine with nine to five.
I'm fine with nine to five.
Anybody else?
I agree. I think the, the village, the village probably had, per household or per property has a higher percentage of commercial landscapers being used in the town. I think we would have more, uh, more homeowners actually doing their own properties if we looked at the overall. Trend.
Okay, so, uh. Go ahead.
So my, I have a question though.
Go ahead.
So, you know, and I know we'll get this to the, um, penalties, whatever later, but who, is this code enforcement? Is this, you know, we asking East Hampton PD? I mean, who is responding? So a homeowner makes a call and says, my neighbor, it's, you know, it's, um, it's Sunday and it's after three and they're using that diesel leaf blower. Who's responding? Because from what I saw in, in, you know, notes from, uh, landscapers that are working right now in the village, I don't know how many tickets violations have actually been given um, for this, based on this, you know, legislation. So I, I'm just curious, you know, um.
John, the calls would be fielded by either PD and or code enforcement. Either one might field the calls. I know PD does field calls for, for noise violations. Uh, and as far as who actually responds on site, I think depends on a couple of things. Depends on the time of day and it depends on priority of calls. Um, you know, certainly if it's a violation in the summer season, I wouldn't necessarily expect PD to show up there uh, ahead of code enforcement, but, uh, you know, they're going to take that on a case by case basis.
Has this legislation, this draft legislation been run past the chief? And, um, Don Coffin just got their input since they're going to be the ones responding to the.
Okay. So I think that would be, uh, an important step to take that once we kind of kick it around a little bit, then we send it to, uh, both the chief and, uh, director of code enforcement for comment. And, uh, get an understanding on how they might enforce these provisions.
Okay.
So that brings us up to.
Um, at the last paragraph is, or B paragraph under, um, what section are we under?
So, so we talked about the times of day and the months of the year. And, uh, then we're. Exception, the exceptions, we did briefly mention ahead, but, and they, they relate mostly to like a major storm. If we had a hurricane during summer season, something like that, that'd be by emergency declaration or executive order of the supervisor to, uh, to waive those requirements during that event or shortly after, or period after that event.
Correct.
Special circumstances, uh, such as an abandoned property or neglected property remediation, road cleanup, that sort of thing on a case by case basis as well.
So how does that, what triggers that? They, they, they're just reaching out to your office or is there a mechanism that'll be put in place?
Well, I mean, if it's, if they're looking for an exemption, then, you know, they would be contacting the town for that exemption.
Is it by board resolution or is it just by your sending them an email that?
This says the supervisor. I didn't draft it, but that's what it says. It says allow the supervisor to determine if those circumstances warrant.
I think the supervisor.
Resolution, it's not going to be, you know.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a, 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 a tree falls on someone's home and there's just a lot of debris that has to be, you know, so how does it happen in real time?
Well, I, I suppose that, uh, you know, the town would have to be contacted that, hey, we want an exemption from this. And it would be referred to my office and I'd look at it and make a determination.
Well, we could, we could have a town board. We could exchange an email on it. I think it should be a town board action other than an emergency. We don't have to pass a resolution, but we could certainly, we do pretty well at getting a consensus on those kinds of emails.
Well, so I.
Doesn't matter to me. I think it's a little unwieldy to involve all the board members.
I do too. I.
Like that, but if, if you, if you want it that way, that's fine.
I, I don't think that we need it that way. I think that, um, but you know, having the supervisor or a police chief, uh, uh, somebody that says, there is an emergency here.
Yeah, highway department.
Cleanup of, yeah, uh, could be, well, um.
Yeah, that's the way that those types of situations normally get solved in a day to day way. You know, we had a situation during COVID where, uh, everything was on total lockdown. We had a windstorm. Uh, one tree went down, two others were teetering over someone's house.
Yep.
And, you know, I authorized, uh, that to be, you know, taken care of, authorized tree cutting crew.
Right.
Uh, it was in conjunction with discussions with the chief of police at the time because the, uh, you know, the unified incentive command was in place, but it's not something we did by town board resolution. You know, those kind of situations usually require immediate attention. So.
So she should have, but it should have been the supervisor and or his or her designate. In case there's a situation where, you know.
Supervisor, you know, in that case.
Yeah, or the, you know. Yeah, or.
Okay, but it could be the police chief. It could be.
Yeah, or it could be a highway superintendent. If, you know, so.
It depend on the situation and, and chances are, you know, there's going to be that. I would have that consultation and any supervisor in a position would have that consultation with those other folks.
Yeah.
Formal practice.
I'm okay with the supervisor and adding it, his or her designate. I, I'm fine with that. And not get it.
Emergency declaration. It's very much in line with.
Well, following a severe storm or any emergency situation.
Just declare like the temporary emergency and make the decision. That's what it is really. It's an emergency.
But this could just be one, it could be one property, not.
Town, so.
Yeah, well, the way this reads is there's the emergency, but then there's also a, uh, it says special circumstance.
Right. I'm, I'm okay with the way it's written. Except adding what Kathy suggested, um, or his or her designate. Is that good? We agree?
Do with that?
Yes. Okay. So suspension of revi- uh, or revocation of a license. Um.
So, so the only thing that I have to, a couple of comments on that is I feel like they shouldn't be applying to the town board. Why wouldn't we just have this handled by a licensed review board instead? I mean, you know, normally they handle all the other kind of license issues. So perhaps maybe just change from town board to licensed review board.
Okay. I like that.
For revocation, um. I was a little curious about some of the language in the middle of that paragraph, um. Con condition, uh, somewhat subjective. Tend to cause injury, damage, unreasonable annoyance to a reasonable person of normal sensitivities that, that.
And that's.
That's a little.
Yeah, that's kind of ambiguous.
Ask John about that one.
The nuisance standard, and that's what the town boards require to do when you review a nuisance complaint.
Okay, that's the link.
I could certainly take that out if you want to.
Is this boilerplate language that?
I'm just curious where it came from.
It's more or less.
Who's going to decide what, you know, what are normal sensitivities?
Well.
That's just.
A choice to do that too sometimes when they look at nuisance.
So I mean, it looks like Carol, it would be up to Carol to decide what a person would normal sensitivities.
I mean, so we can just.
Dude, we want to, do we want to put that on Carol?
We can, we can take that out and then, you know, it'll just, uh.
Or just refer to nuisance standards or something. I don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me see if I can pick that so.
That one jumped out.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Okay.
Lawyer's language that you see frequently.
Yeah. So then, um, you know, moving on, the, the only other references were again, sort of town board paragraphs three and four, or three and five, uh, suggest maybe also again inserting license review board for town board in those circumstances.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone else with those paragraphs? That brings us up to penalties and offenses.
So this again is boilerplate kind of stuff. So, um.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly adjust this. I mean, our noise code talks about periods within, uh, you know, a second offense is with in eighteen months, but the zoning code is a five year term. Um, kind of, we could, we could certainly do adjustments to this, um, based on what you think is reasonable.
Yeah, I think, I think in, I don't know. Let me hear from other board members first and then I'll chime in.
Yeah, I, I had emailed John and talked about this too, because I, I, I thought it might be a little aggressive. Um, yes. So I was waiting to hear what you guys were going to say.
Five years question.
Yeah, it's a little over the top.
Okay, just just asking. Um, it is in, uh, someone else.
Sounds like parole review board instead of licensing or in this.
Well, yeah, it, but it is again, one of these boilerplate things that happens, um.
I, yeah, so, so it sounds like other members think maybe we need to, um, refine the fee schedule and the, the period of time in which we want, in which one would accumulate additional offenses uh, might be addressed to. John, you said the zoning is five years and.
Yeah, noise is eighteen months though for.
Months and.
Yeah. And they, you know, they all vary with what the, the minimum fine is.
Five years seems like a long time for, for this statute for these kind of offenses. And then some of the fines maybe don't line up with, um, with the offenses.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like. Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say with a lot of, with, with a lot of fine schedules, um, very often the first offense doesn't have a minimum and it usually has a maximum not to exceed, but gives the judge discretion if they think it was not, you know, justified or maybe justified to the point of the minimum, they at least have discretion to, um, moderate the fine on the first offense. And then a lot of the minimums kick in on the second and third offense. So we could consider that as well.
It doesn't look low though, looking at Southampton Village and East Hampton Village that they have, you know, not to exceed a thousand dollars or imprisonment for a term not exceeding fifteen days. But they don't seem to have, they don't spell out second, third.
They don't have escalating, they don't have escalating fines and, and, you know.
Yeah, they do.
Not what I'm, not, I'm looking at Southampton Village.
Right. Southampton Village goes two fifty, five hundred, twenty five hundred, and then five thousand on the third.
Not the one I have.
Um, it should be the one, this is the one.
This is seventy eight dash five penalties for offenses. There's no, um, step up in, in what I have. So.
Why don't we just go to what board members think might be reasonable? When we have two different categories, in A, persons who violate any of the provisions except violation of no license. So you use a push behind leaf blower. That's a violation, right? Or you're operating outside of the calendar dates or timeframe. Talking about the first offense of that is a finesse, not less than five hundred, not more than a thousand. Second offense, not less than fifteen hundred, not more than twenty five hundred. And the third offense, not less than three thousand, not more than ten thousand.
I'm not in favor of jail time for, um, miscreant, uh, landscape people.
This is also homeowners too.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't think it's appropriate.
Yeah, the village keeps the, um, uh, jail time and imprisonment and.
So John, this is in our zoning code. Is that where it comes from?
Um.
Missed the misdemeanor.
Yes, and, yes, and no, this is less than the zoning code. The zoning code goes with a greater, um, jail sentence, but um, the idea was to, to, you know, have a less than a misdemeanor jail sentence. So it's not a misdemeanor. We could certainly take that out. I mean, yeah, it's very, very rare. Uh, I've actually never seen that happen where you had the judge, um, actually issued jail time for somebody.
Yeah, it just doesn't look good either. I mean, it isn't something that because you're blowing leaves that we'd want.
So take the, take the time out. Is that the idea? Is that the thought of everybody?
Yeah, that's what I was emailing you.
The stocks. All be placed at town hall.
Not going to get to use those.
The old fashioned punishment? So, so everybody agrees that the imprisonment provision be taken out?
Yeah.
That's boilerplate we can do without.
It's in the village, uh, East Hampton Village, but it's not, I don't think we need to have it in ours.
If that's something we can revisit, if we feel that it really gets the place where we have to imprison.
And just, just to get back to what Kathy said, still, we need, this would go against homeowners and that's another reason why. I'm, I'm more ready to phase this in with time, timeframes, contractors and look at the homeowner aspect of this.
Then back to the fine, to the fine schedule.
Right.
So we have a person tends five hundred, not more than a thousand. And, and of course there, there are various different things. I mean, you could have somebody who's, who's dumping a bunch of debris and a scene of easement or something. You know, that might be more egregious in the eyes of some than, you know, running a half hour late on the cleanup on a property. Time wise, I don't know.
Now, the, there are other sections in the code too where we could also, like the dumping, if they did do the dumping, we can cite them under the dumping statute too.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
Up the higher fines if, if we wanted to do that.
And do we have to do not less than? I mean, can't we leave that to our, our, our town justices to decide?
You can. You, you can certainly not have a, a minimum threshold. You could, it could be anywhere from zero to whatever number and leave it at the discretion of the court. Absolutely.
Well, I mean, is there a minimum that the board would agree would be acceptable in any case? I mean, normally, wouldn't, wouldn't the person just be told the first time around anyway?
Right.
Uh, you know, informed as to the law, their name taken down, and the first offense would really be the second time? Isn't that the way we normally proceed with most kind of things? I mean, dumping, dumping, I don't know if it goes in that category, but, you know, maybe exceeding the hours.
And remember, this is a conviction. This isn't, you know, somebody that might be cited and goes to court. This is a conviction.
Understood.
Okay.
So was there a, a minimum?
I'd be willing to give the judge the discretion. You know, rather than having.
No minimum and only a maximum.
Not more than?
From the first.
Yeah, a maximum, a range.
Minimum on the second offense though? Second or third offense, wouldn't you want a minimum?
Sure.
I was talking about the first, I was talking about the first.
Understood. So we've agreed that we'll, we'll put it, take the minimum out on first offenses.
Add it.
And we have is.
I, I don't want to have a minimum anywhere. That's my personal. I want to give it the discretion of justice.
I, I, I'm okay with that. Yeah. These are small towns, small cases, you know.
Okay, what about maximums?
I would not have more than 5,000. That, it matches what the village is doing.
Okay. And that's for the third.
Yeah.
Actually, first offense for not having license, right? Am I reading that correctly? All right, so back in A, not more than 5,000.
Right.
That's, that's pretty expensive for.
And the same for, uh, for on license as well, max fine.
Yep.
Instead of 50,000 for the third.
Do we, I'm sorry, on A again, were we, were we narrowing down the time limit to for repeat offenses? Were we shortening?
Five years.
18 months?
18 months or two years.
Okay.
I do two, yeah, 18 months, two years.
Board members, 18 months, two years?
Yep, that's fine.
Which?
Which?
Which, 18 months or two years timeframe?
18 months, I'll go for 18, it's.
And we're looking for compliance, I think, 18 months.
Yeah.
Okay.
18 months, so you start over after 18 months. If you've been good for 18 months, then it's a clean slate. Is that good with everybody?
Yep. We can change that to say.
18 months, 5,000 max in any case or multiple.
Yep.
Anything else?
Do you have a recommendation, Sylvia, for what the fee should be for getting the license?
Um, I, I, I'm going to talk to Carol and talk to John, and we'll, we'll figure out a, a fee schedule. I'm not thinking anything big, so.
I would think it'd be somewhat commensurate with what the other.
Exactly. So let's, let's see what the others are. And, yeah.
Okay, anything else before we move on? I think we had a caller on the line earlier. Michael, do we have any callers on the line?
We do actually have about four callers on the line. I can unmute the first caller in queue.
Great, thanks so much.
I'm unmuting that first caller right now.
Hello?
Morning. Or good afternoon.
This is Jim McMillan from, oh, he got me doing it now. Yes, good afternoon, town board. This is Jim McMillan from Amagansett. I hope everyone's well. Uh, two quick comments on the leaf blower legislation. Uh, first of all, the sizing of the lots that it's limited to. Uh, Amagansett Village or Hamlet, when you come home, it's seven days a week, uh, seven days a week, all, in all daylight hours. And the problem with our area is every lot is about 0.49, 0.52, 0.56. And so they're all just over a half an acre, so the leaf blowing will continue as usual here. This won't really help us if the size is only, it really should be an acre, because a half an acre is way too small for the volume of those things. So maybe you'll reconsider making all of the restrictions, you know, for an acre and less, as opposed to the half acre won't do anything for us. So that's the first thing. Uh, the other comment is about homeowners. We're not really looking to persecute a homeowner. The focus here really is about the public nuisance with the noise and the amount of toxic pollution it's putting out regardless of who's actually using it. So, um, you know, most homeowners can get it done one day during the week. And the other argument, the opposite argument to that is people like me who work all week long and finally have one day a week off on a Sunday where you want to transplant plants and do things in your garden, have a peaceful day. It's ruined. So it's the same, you know, the benefit to the community of banning them on Sundays far outweighs the benefit to the, maybe a handful of homeowners who are going to scream and yell that I can't do it on Sunday. So I hope you'll reconsider that as well. It's not against the homeowner, it's the machine, it's a disturbance to the neighborhood, and it's the pollution. And those are the only two comments I really needed to add. So thank you very much for pursuing this.
Thanks for taking the time to call us and let us know your comments, Jim.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
You too. Michael, we'll take the next caller.
Okay, I'm unmuting the next caller right now.
Hello, this is Lena Tabori. I'm not sure if I was. Oh, good.
Sorry.
Okay, so, yeah, so I, I'm, as usual, enormously appreciative of the depth of the conversation that you've all attended to this legislation, which came out of a recommendation from the Energy Sustainability Committee, and Paul, of course, is representing us there and has been great. I have only a couple of things to say. Some of the discussion has focused on things like time and homeowners, which is a noise, generally speaking, it, it's coming from the noise consideration aspect of things. But out of the committee, this legislation grew, not only because of noise, but primarily because of health. And I think in the same way that we require drivers to use heat belts, sometimes we have to require people to do things for their own good, even if they don't exactly realize it themselves. So the amount of pollution, both the noise pollution for the user of the equipment and the amount of toxic pollution for the user of the equipment is a critical aspect of things. Not to mention the fact that you are constantly getting gas spillage when you're using a gas blower under all circumstances, and that's affecting our aquifers. So I would ask you, and I understand the exemption that you'd like to give homeowners, but I would like to ask you to reconsider that and to suggest that we have simply got to transit over to electric on every level that we possibly can. Not because the energy that we're receiving on an electric basis at the moment is perfect, it is not, but it never will be perfect from a gas point of view. It will never be perfect from a fossil fuel point of view. It will only get better if ultimately we improve the amount of renewables that come into our electric energy and therefore into our blowers. So I would just, I guess I'm really just asking you to, to reduce the amount of priority that we're giving to noise and to accelerate the amount of priority that we're giving to health in this discussion. And I'm, I'm so sorry for those people that are understandably focused on, on the, the small time user, which would be the, the homeowner, but I really think that the homeowner has got to get it, get with the program along with everybody else. Thank you very much.
Lena, Lena, before you go, can I ask you a question? Are, are you still on?
Yes.
Are you, are you okay with permitting the gas blowers? We talked, we had a discussion that they would be permitted in like the shoulder seasons?
Absolutely. And, you know, this was a, this was a, this was a complex conversation within the committee itself, because we had a number of members who believed that we should simply ban them altogether. But Paul, who was our only landscaper, and we relied upon his knowledge enormously, suggested that we don't yet have electric leaf blowers which are powerful enough to deal with the weight of the debris that exists for fall cleanup and spring cleanup or for storm emergency situations, for example, which is why you've made those exemptions within the, the legislation that was drawn up by the town.
Okay.
I, you know, obviously this is going to change because the electric blowers are going to become better, and when they do, they need to replace the gas blowers altogether. So for me, this is a, this is a step right now. We're, I mean, we're trying to eliminate them during these periods when there's a light amount of debris on the ground, and that light amount can be handled by electric blowers. Um, but we need to, of course, change that when, when, when the electric blowers become more powerful and the batteries become more powerful. I hated the part of the conversation about the generators because it never occurred to me and it never did get discussed within our own committee that potentially people are going to power their electric blowers with generators? Because boy, would that be the opposition of what we are trying to achieve here. But that said, you know, I guess there are some things, if I would pay attention to Al-Anon, that even I cannot control, and that would be one of them. So, but for the moment, this is the best we can do, but I would, I would hate you to give an exemption to anyone during these months.
Thank you so much for calling in, Lena.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me out.
We have any other callers on the line, Michael?
Yes, we do. I'll unmute the next caller right now. Hello, caller, live with the town board?
Um, hi, this is Joan McGivern. I just wanted to echo Lena's support for the legislation and thank you for your work. I've actually been holding on for your, the next Environmental Sustainability Committee legislation or resolution that's coming up.
Thank you, Joan. Appreciate you taking the time to call in.
Mrs. Supervisor, we have one more caller on hold. I'll unmute right now.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Chris Ganich, and thank you very much for addressing this complicated but, but very much needed legislation. I ask for clarification of the use of electric blower timeframes between May 20th and September 20th.
So I, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sylvia or anybody else, the, the restrictions on the timeframe relate only to the gas or diesel powered blowers. The electrics can be used, you know,
Anytime.
Anytime within the, the time, the noise timeframes, right?
So I'll tell you that during the summer, as Councilman Bragman said, that there's very little or no need for them, they still go all the time blowing, you know, particulate matter around. And the noise ordinance actually is 7:00 AM to 8:30 PM, if you excuse the decibel level ranges that are a bit complicated in the noise ordinance. So it's 7:00 to 8:30 every day of the week. And I can tell you where I live, this is constant in the summertime. So I'm just suggesting that you take a look at that and possibly address the summertime use of electric blowers as well.
So you're suggesting that the noise aspect should be further addressed with further restrictions? Is that correct?
Not only noise, but it's also, if you, we, we call them dust blowers in this neighborhood rather than leaf blowers. There's really not much many leaves, but the amount of particulates that are blown around in the summertime is not minimal. So yes, noise and particulates. Yeah, so if you could look, take a look at that. 7:00 to 8:30 every day of the week during the summer, I think is excessive.
Thank you so much for calling in, Chris. Appreciate your comments. Do we have any other callers?
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Yes, I believe we have one last caller who's been on hold. I'll unmute right now.
Thanks, Michael.
Hi, I'm still just mostly concerned about the stop sign, so I'm, it's not my turn yet. Thank you very much.
Okay, Bethany, we'll get back to you later. Thanks.
That are all the current callers, Mrs. Supervisor.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to move on to the next topic, which is the fleet efficiency plan. We have Lauren Steinberg from Natural Resources Department. As the board members know, we, the town board has made it a policy that we try to move to greener energy. We've installed charging stations here at town hall. We have already begun replacing our fleet of vehicles where, where practical with electric vehicles or with hybrids due to our clean energy accomplishments. We received a grant which we reinvested in the town's fleet to buy some additional electric vehicles. Lauren, you want to give us the next step here in our fleet improvement?
Sure. So, um, yeah, as Peter mentioned, the town has already taken steps to, to go down this path. And, uh, um, I mean, I, I get calls from other municipalities that ask us, you know, how we did it, what we're doing. So we're already moving in the right direction. But the, the Energy Sustainability Committee thought it was important for the town to solidify these efforts by adopting a policy which would be implemented across all town departments for the procurement of electric vehicles. And we drafted a policy which was circulated to the town board members, and the current draft for consideration would require that any new light duty vehicle purchased or leased by the town be a battery electric vehicle. And battery electric vehicles are fully electric and they produce no tailpipe emissions. And the alternative compliance option pathway for that would be in the case where there's no battery electric vehicle available on the retail market at the time of procurement that would meet the needs for which the vehicle is intended. Departments may then select a plug-in hybrid electric vehicle. Plug-in hybrids run on rechargeable battery and a gasoline engine, so they have a specific range of miles in which the vehicle will run solely on the battery before the gasoline engine takes over, and we have three of those in our fleet as well that are used by human services. Um, and in the case where no battery electric vehicle or plug-in hybrid is available on the retail market at the time of procurement that would meet the needs which the vehicle is intended, departments may then select a hybrid electric vehicle. Hybrid electric vehicles are also known as mild hybrids, and they're powered by both gasoline and electricity, using gasoline much more efficiently than conventional vehicles, and we do have several of those in our fleet as well. Um, and while marketplace, the marketplace for EVs is rapidly growing, not all currently available electric vehicles can match the performance of or fulfill the duties required of gas or diesel vehicles. So gas and diesel vehicles may still need to be relied upon by certain departments for certain tasks. But the purchase of these vehicles, if it is needed to purchase them moving forward, should be justified to the purchasing department, and these vehicles should be required to meet a minimum combined fuel efficiency rating to ensure that the town is procuring as fuel efficient vehicles as possible when the procurement of those vehicles can't be avoided. And the town would also procure electric medium and heavy duty vehicles as those vehicles become more widely available. The marketplace for those is growing as well. And in addition, the town would continue to install EV charging stations, focusing on locations where they can be used by fleet vehicles. And then the Department of Natural Resources would also keep a current fleet vehicle inventory to track the town's procurement of electric vehicles. So that is the, um, the first draft of this proposed policy and looking for some feedback from the town board members.
Thank you, Lauren. Just quickly. Just quickly, can you give us an update on the status of the Montauk Charging Station? How that construction's proceeding? I know it was getting close to being completed.
Sure, so the, the construction and the electrical work has been completed. They are waiting for final inspection from PSCNG this week. And if that inspection passes, they tell me that the stations will be electrified within a week after that.
That's excellent. So as the board members know, the Tesla, along with Electrify America, have at no cost to the town installed 12 charging stations in the municipal lot at downtown Montauk. And some of those, the Tesla models are, are only for, for charging Teslas, the proprietary, the Energize America, our universal chargers, quick chargers. So that will expand the number of chargers that we have within town, within Montauk. Are there any other questions for Lauren about the town's plan to improve fleet efficiency?
No, I think it's, you know, it's terrific that we're, you know, articulating it and putting it into policy. I, you know, I had Diane Fitrizio share with me, you know, because we have a number of, yes, we've got three mini buses, three vans, a car, just in senior transportation, and then five vehicles in human services, just, just to see, you know, what kind of mileage we put on these vehicles each month. And, and I had asked her if she knew what the miles per gallon were, and that's something that, you know, we don't record. I guess we find that out when we go to bid. We would have to put that in our bid specs as we move forward. Out of curiosity, did, were these figures shared with Rick Talmadge? And do we know, like, how our, you know, vehicles measure up, you know, today?
So Rick has been very helpful in helping me draft this to the point that it's at.
Great.
And we, I mean, the, the, the miles per gallon, the sticker miles per gallon for these vehicles is something that we can easily look up for each vehicle. And, but in terms of calculating the specific miles per gallon based on our specific miles driven for the vehicle and the specific amount of fuel that vehicle has used over a certain amount of time, we can calculate that if you wanted to get down to that specific of a figure.
Yeah, I do think we have the ability with the fuel station computer logs the mileage and how many gallons per pump. So it's, that's data that is accessible.
It may say here, but I don't see it this minute. These are local miles per gallon, right? Not highway, correct?
They're, if you're referring to the, the miles per gallon rating for newly purchased gas or diesel vehicles, that's combined.
Okay.
Highway and, and local, which that's just a, a best practice as standard for, you know, doing an apples to apples comparison of fuel efficiency for vehicles.
Okay. We might want to, we might just want to articulate that, like, combined in forens because that, you know, so folks know.
Okay, I thought I had that, but if not, I will add that back in.
I know Lauren and I have talked about this in procurement when we started getting to the, the medium heavier duty ones. We looked into some of the trash packer trucks that we have been recently purchasing. One of the issues when we get there right now is that the weight of the truck becomes a lot heavier with the batteries that they're going to be using. And then with the weight of the truck, that comes a different classification as far as the driver of the truck then too. So these are things as technology moves forward, we'll continue to look at through those procurements. My, my, one of my questions to you, Lauren, would be, okay, this is for future policy, but I know we purchased recently some heavier duty, sorry, some light duty trucks in some of our departments. Is there a way, and this might be into a budget, can we sell those back, get the best money we can before they get too many miles on them, and reinvest that money into newer greener technology? So instead of waiting for that vehicle that we purchased two years ago to go through its wear life of another eight or 10 years, is there a way we can get, recruit as much money as possible now and we, and we capture that and reinvest it into something that will fit our policy?
So that really becomes a financial question. And we have a certain number of vehicles in any given year that need to be replaced. They're worn out, they won't pass inspection. We have a number of vehicles that we've had on the road since the 90s that are due this current cycle and are capped plan to be replaced. You know, we, I think we have to take a look at the financial aspect of that if we can go beyond just the regular attrition and replacement. And to your point, David, be even more aggressive, then, you know, that's something we can look at. There is obviously a financial impact to that as well. But that might be able to, that might advance our progress even further than just placing vehicles based on attrition.
Can we write that into this policy? So that, I mean, it's, and of course, it depends on the financial, you know, aspect of it. But I think to know that-
Where possible, yeah.
Okay.
Not a phrase like where possible, you know, in a given year. Again, you know, I think trying to find the, the sweet spot there is aggressive as we can without them doing burden financially. Is important. I, I can't see us just going and replacing the entire fleet with electric vehicles all at once.
No, I can't either, but I do think when we make purchases and we've got them every year in our capital budget where we're purchasing vehicles, that we need to make those, make sure that those vehicles are going to be, you know, electric vehicles or the hybrids, whatever is available in that capital.
We could maybe look at some of the vehicles based on what their gas mileage is too. And rather than the age necessarily of the vehicle and the ones that use the most fuel, maybe prioritize those in any given year to be replaced.
Okay, but that shouldn't be written into the policy?
Are you getting all that, Lauren?
Yeah. You got that, Lauren? Okay.
I see you're looking down. Looks like you're designing.
Okay, I hope you're writing it down.
I think so. Very good. Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay. Do we have any callers on the line, Michael?
Yes, we do. I believe there was someone on hold previously who wanted to discuss this. I'll unmute that line right now.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Joan McGivern. I was holding on for this resolution. I wanted to say that the Energy Sustainability Committee applauds Lauren's work on this and obviously we support it, we put it forward. But I wanted to bring to the board's attention that a large section of the Climate Action Plan from 2015, Section 2.4, addressed the town's fleet. And one of the goals was converting, you know, as practical, the fleet over to more sustainable vehicles. So this would be one way of working towards that goal. And that's Section 2.4, pages 14 and 15.
Right. This is actually a discussion about making what happens to the town board's policy since then, just a written policy for our procurement. We have actually been following that to the extent, the greatest extent we, you know, we were able to to date. And this just really will further emphasize that. Move it along. So thank, thank you for that. And thanks for your participation with the Energy Sustainability Committee, Joan.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Be well. Michael, do we have any other callers on the line?
I believe we do. I will unmute the next caller right now.
Hi, Peter, it's Lena again. I'm so sorry, but once again, I'm just here to be grateful for the discussion that you're all having and for the gravitas with which you've put the concerns of the committee. I wanted to add just a comment, which is that because finances are such a critical aspect of all decisions that get made, the one thing we don't think about a great deal is what the cost savings are going to be in the long run. And in this particular situation, it probably will be more expensive for us to buy electric vehicles. So as a capital expense, we will be spending more. But from the point of view of maintaining those vehicles, there are hardly any moving parts in an electric car. So the hundreds of moving parts that create problems in gas cars will not be ours to worry about. And I don't know how we, from a financial standpoint, put that into our thinking. But that, I think, it, we, we need to add it not only to our thinking in terms of this particular resolution, but as other things come up too, whether it's, you know, heat pump systems or whatever it might be. Probably the original capital costs will be, oh my God. But on the long term, we may find that within a few years, we've under, we've, we've handled that particular problem and we're moving on to a cheaper world ahead of us. So I just want to throw that in there.
Yeah, Lena, your point's well taken. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, it would make sense for us to prioritize those vehicles which have the highest use of fuel to try and replace them sooner rather than later. And as you say, the maintenance of these hybrids and electric vehicles tend to be less, at least to date, I guess, you know, they haven't been around long enough to fully know. But, you know, the long term, taking a long term view of what the costs are and payback period is, is important. The costs that we can't measure, which are improvements to our environment and to people's health by reducing emissions and the, the lessening impacts on climate are all costs that are hard to quantify, but obviously are something that we need to keep in mind as well. So thank you for all of your work, helping us with these decisions and bringing us information and good ideas for us to follow up on.
Thank you, Peter.
Any other callers on the line, Michael?
We do not have any new callers, just one who's holding for the topic on street signs.
We'll move on now to our next to last agenda item, which is Second House Historic Landmark Designation. I, I think it, it came as great surprise that the Second House in Montauk has never been designated as a historic structure. The original Second House is built, I think, in 1749 and housed the keeper of livestock that were grazed out on Montauk more lands every summer season. The original cattle drive in the United States went from East Hampton Village through Amegansett out to Montauk and then back again when the weather turned cold in the grazing season, it ended. We made a commitment to renovate and restore Second House, to bring in a formalized agreement with the Montauk Historical Society to manage this historic property. Councilman Leece has been very helpful in taking over that restoration as I moved to supervisor and we're now completing the second phase of it. But I think everyone kind of had thought that it was already designated. Councilman Leece brought it to our attention. It hasn't yet been, certainly is eligible. And our discussion today will be about that exact topic and the, whether or not the board is supportive of having that structure designated, which I certainly hope they will be. So David, I'll kick it over to you.
Yes, thank you very much, Peter. I think what Peter just stated, it did come to a great surprise in going through our article of our code that stated that the Second House, which is one of the oldest houses in East Hampton, was never designated as a, as an historical structure in the town. And with potentially doing so, will protect it for future use and then also potentially bring in greater chances for institutional grant funding. In doing so, there's a process in the code to do so. Most recently, we did so for the Art Barge and, and another associated structure, the DMeco, excuse me if I'm saying it correctly, Artist House. I do have a, just a, a quick little PowerPoint I just quickly put together here. I'm just going to share it on my screen and we just quickly go through it. Also, I do have Jessica James here from the Montauk Historical Society. I'll lead into her in just a little bit. And I want to thank for this from Bob Hefner to Mia Surtik, who's Executive Director of the Montauk Historical Society, Mr. Becker, Bill Becker, and Jessica for information, and John and Paul for their assistance in this presentation. Please just confirm that that's coming through and-
Yes.
So Second House, we're here to discuss an historical designation of the Montauk Second House and Barn. Sorry about that. Primarily, the discussion of the designation of Second House and Barn as historical landmarks is looking to add to Chapter 255, 725 of the Town Code, which is a designation of historical landmarks and historical districts in the town of East Hampton. The town board may designate certain lots, lands, buildings, and/or structures within the town as historical landmarks, historical districts, per the following procedures. Specifically on this one in Section 2, the town board may designate an individual building or structure as a landmark if the building or structure shows any of these following criteria. A possesses special character or historic or a set of interests or value as part of the culture, political, economic, or social history of the town. B is identified with historic persons, such as what Peter just mentioned with the keepers. C embodies a distinguishing characteristic of an architectural style, building type, period, or method of construction. Or D is the work of an architect, engineer, or builder of local and regional importance. And this was added in 2007. Just to reference Second House. Second House is on the eastern side of the Hither Plains area, right when you come to the Montauk. I, I personally believe it's one of the most iconic views right when you come over the Finazos House and you get to see downtown Montauk there. So we get to see the, the Second House here as being, as being restored recently with the ocean, Montauk, sorry, with Atlantic Ocean in the far distance. And to the left here, we get to see also Fort Pond and how downtown Montauk sets. So it sets right in the breast of, of the village in the hamlet of Montauk. The history of Second House is Second House of, I gotta move this screen. Second House of Fort Pond is, the House of Fort Pond was known as Second House. It was built in, this iteration is built in 1797, when according to East Hampton Town Trustee records, the town allotted three gallons of rum to raise the house at Fort Pond. Where do I sign up? It was built on the site of the first house.
I wonder what you'd give Bill today for three gallons of rum?
Not much. The current house and barn are two of the remaining structures. But during its almost 250-year history, other structures dotted the property. Robert Hefner, historical consultant, architectural consultant in 2016, wrote a historical structural report that details the significance of both the house and the remaining barn. You can find that historical structural report on the Montauk Historical's website. Also on that website of Montauk Historical Society, you can find some more great information about history, historical locations of Montauk, specifically the Second House. And on my shameless plug here, you could also find your holiday gifts if you want. Buy them online and support the Montauk Historical Society. Second House played a key role in the, in the social evolution of Montauk. It was a center of early rural life. Originally, Second House was home to the keeper, who together with his family, was an overseer of the cattle and sheep that grazed in Montauk pasture lands, as Peter alluded to. The Second House keeper was responsible separating these sheep from cows. Cultural history of Montauk, tourism. The keeper's dwelling became, became an inn for the weary travelers that came to Montauk. They came to fish and hunt through the years. Others came to experience the beauty, the wild beauty of Montauk. Numerous articles in 19th century press described visitors in making mention of the hospitality and comfortable accommodations and fine dining. Important social events were also held there and prominent weddings. A wedding took place between Abraham Baker Dayton and Mary Alice Osborne in 1881. One of the largest weddings in East Hampton Town in many years was celebrated at Second House between Betsy Dayton Payne, daughter of proprietor Alyssa Payne, and Charles Taylor, Cooper Taylor in 1897. And education, the first school in Montauk was established at Second House on October 5th, 1896. Second House and East Hampton's maritime and military history because it's a location between the Nap Peak and Dish Plains lifesaving stations. Second House inevitably played a role in maritime disaster relief. For example, Samuel Stratton, Second House keeper, was the first to discover the remnants of the shipwreck John Milton after it crashed- after it crashed on Montauk shore in February 1858. Later, guessed the end participating in rescue efforts. So the lot members of the Preszer and Church in East Hampton Village, and if you also go to the South End Cemetery, you'll see a tall opelus that's dedicated to the people of John Milton. It was, I think, one of the greatest things that the early colonials did in that time was trying to care for these deceased individuals. Also during Camp Wyckoff, period of 1898, we might know the Rough Riders came back from quarantine in Cuba. Second House provided logic for what must have been a lively assortment of news reporters who published accounts of their experiences there. Second House's recent history, from 1909 until East Hampton Town bought the property in 1968, Second House was the hands of the Kennedy family of New York City. They used it principally as a summer residence, though they also ran the property as an inn for several years during their tenure. When the Town bought Second House, it was the understanding that the Montauk Historical Society would manage the property as a museum. Currently, Town, East Hampton Town, is nearing the end of the second of three phases of restoration, which will return the Second House to its appearance in 1886 in accordance with the recommendations of Bob Hefner's and his historical structure report, which was written in 2016. A couple of pictures of Second House here. This is a picture on the right of Second House, probably from yesterday, because they just finished the top gable there of shingling. And the other picture was 100 years ago, approximately. That's what the Executive Director told me. You can see how the historical, the restoration efforts that the Town has been supporting in Phase 2, which takes care of the outside of the structure, is bringing it back to its glory in 1896 with the yellow cedar shingles, the restoration glass, and the craftsmanship on the porch right now is quite spectacular. I welcome individuals to come there after the construction is done. I would like to read off this. This is actually from Bob Hefner. He wrote this up for historical landmark designation proposal. Second House is historically significant for its associations with the Montauk pasture from 1797, when it was built, to 1895, when the traditional use of the pasture by East Hampton farmers came to an end. From 1660s to 1895, the Montauk pasture was primary resource that East Hampton's farmers determined the prominent agricultural practice of raising livestock. From 1746, when the first keeper's house of Fort Pond was built, the pasture was managed by three keepers who lived at the hither end, first house, Fort Pond, second house, and the further end, third house. Second House is primarily significant as a dwelling of the keepers who lived there, Christopher Hedges, John Parsons, among others. From 2019 to 2020, the Town of East Hampton restored the exterior of Second House to its appearance in 1886, when George A. Osborne, the last keeper employed by the proprietors of Montauk departed. Mr. Osborne lived at Second House when Arthur Benson built his east addition and added a porch. This accurate restoration of the exterior allows the property to recall the lives of the keepers at Second House and their role in managing the Montauk pasture. 1809 Barn is significant as an example of a three-bay English barn that was favored type for the East Hampton farmers from the 17th century through the 19th century. The barn measures 26 by 28 feet and plan is among the smaller East Hampton's early English barns, having a 10-foot wide center bay with a nine-foot bay on either side. History of architecture of Second House, Barn, and property are documented in the Second House Historical Structure Report prepared in 2016 by Mr. Hefner for the Town of East Hampton. As documented in this designation proposal, Second House and Barn meet the criteria for designation as a historic landmark as set forth in Chapter 255, 725, the Town Code Designation of Historical Landmarks and Historic Districts of East Hampton Town Code. Second House and Barn possess special character, historic aesthetic interest and value as part of the cultural, economic, and social history of East Hampton and body the distinction characteristics of a building type, period, and method of construction. I thank Bob for producing that for us. As I move forward, I just want to lighten everyone a little bit more about the efforts for the restoration. This is Phase 2, where we're taking down the cladding and the siding. We've removed some of the gables. A lot of the demolition was assisted by the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department and their workforce, work labor program. You can see some of the millwork on these wonderful six by eight full mahogany pieces on the outside of the decking. Some aerial photos from the top. You know, they worked through the cold. I think we got some nice weather last winter, allowed us to move forward. And it produces what we're up to in our next steps. The next steps would be to the Town Board, Chapter 255, 725, adopted the Town Board could designate lots, lands, or buildings as historical landmarks and list the criteria for doing so. In 2007, a provision was added to the section of code that allows buildings and structures to be designated as historical landmarks while excluding underlying land. If the Town Board agrees and wants to move forward with designating and feels that the buildings meet this criteria, a public hearing will be held and then legislation will be adopted, so designating the structures as an historical landmark. The Art Barge was recently added in 2019. The board can also set guidelines specific and specific standards for the ARB to consider in reviewing. If I can just actually pull up one option also, just if you give me one moment to... I wanted to screen share one picture. This actually be... I'm so sorry about that. Screen share this. I'm screen sharing up the historical structure report, the 1809 Barn that is also on the property. I wasn't able to pull these pictures out and how it looks like from the backside. This is what Bob Hefner was discussing. The historical structure report, again, is a great read. It's about 55 pages. Great pictures of Montauk from colonial settlement days. There is one picture in here that some of these maps are just great. I love old maps. Anyway, we're saying that. I wanted to ask you just to bring in, we have both Jessica James and Mia Surtik, who are, Mia Surtik is the Executive Director of the Montauk Historical Society and Jessica James is a board member. If they have any comments, we'd like to hear from you.
David, it's Jessica James. Good afternoon, Supervisor Van Schoyek and board members. Thank you for that great presentation, David. I really appreciate it. I just want to make a few brief comments representing the Montauk Historical Society today as the Chair of its Second House Committee. And I want to take this opportunity to thank the Town for its extraordinary commitment to restoring Second House. Montauk Historical Society appreciates the trust that you have placed in us as stewards of this magnificent historic property. But as you all know, as David just presented, this property has been a hub of Montauk rural life since the 1700s. And it is still today. The grounds are used for community gatherings. There are craft fairs, archaeology festivals. We have host Sansa Macom Day there. And we look forward to the restoration of the building so that we can design what we hope will be a really wonderful museum. We thank the Town for entrusting us for the long lease on the property. And just so that the public knows, Second House is, the management is overseen by the East Hampton Town Property Management Committee. And on that committee sit David Leece and Supervisor Van Schoyek. And I really just want to give a shout out to David, who's been such a terrific partner in this really monumental project. He's been responsive and creative and he's really pushed this effort forward. Robert Hefner, thank you, Town, for engaging him because he took what was just a feeling from Montauk Historical Society and our Montauk community that we really wanted this property to be restored to its former glory. And he took that notion and he came up with an actionable plan, which was so detailed. And as David said, great to read. I encourage everybody to go onto the MHS website and pull it up for yourselves. But I also wanted to mention Ronald Webb Construction Company, who won the bid to finish Phase 2, which is now being done now. Their workmanship is extraordinary and we're going to be left with a building that is going to be the jewel and the crown of Montauk. So Montauk Historical Society, as you probably all know, owns the Montauk Lighthouse. We manage Second House, so we have these really wonderful, wonderful properties at either end of Montauk. And I hope you'll all come and visit when we're further along in the process. And by the way, we do hope to open up the grounds for outdoor events, COVID permitting, by next summer. So keep your eyes on that. Thank you very much again, Councilman Leece and Town Board.
Thank you, Jessica. It's great to have you with us today. And, you know, Second House has a warm spot in my heart. You know, I was on the board when Larry Cantwell and I realized that there was no formal agreement with the Montauk Historical Society. Things, you know, back in the day, we're just done with a handshake and that was it. And there was no license agreement. And there was confusion about who was responsible for what and who actually owned the building and whatnot. So we worked through that with the Historical Society and I'm really grateful that they're such a great organization in Montauk who could partner with us and take over the management of this incredible structure. It also holds a warm place in my heart because members of my family grazed livestock on the Montauk morelands in the 1700s and most likely utilized that structure at some point. And in working on the restoration of the project, I realized that the only creatures that had a greater number of generations were probably the raccoons, which had been there for, I don't know how many years, living down in the cellar and up in the walls and whatnot. So while they don't continue to habitate that building, certainly their descendants and our descendants will both be able to visit from time to time. So again, thanks for all involved and certainly I think this structure is worthy of a landmark designation.
So I asked the board, if you'd like to, I can download the historical structure report, send it over for just review or for reading. Please let me know if you have any concerns or considerations of this, if you want to move forward with this historical designation. We would have to put it up to a public hearing, of course, and then go through the transcripts. I would be supportive of it also. I was quite surprised, as Peter mentioned, when him and I were talking, that it wasn't designated. But I do think it would be a great thing for the Town of East Hampton, Montauk in general, and specifically just for the structure and all of the history that goes along with those, the barn and that. But I'm open for any comments.
Any comments, questions?
I would just say that I support the designation. I think it was five years ago when Catherine Nadeau from the Montauk Historical Society gave me a private tour just after the raccoons were cleared out. And all I can say is we've come a long way, baby. I mean, it just looks tremendous. And, you know, I look forward to the public hearing when we hear from the community for this historic designation.
So you all should have an electronic version of Robert Hefner's Second House Structural Report. I've just forwarded that to you. And if there are any other questions or comments, I'll move on.
I'd like to add my thanks to Jessie's comments. We are so excited at the progress that's been made on this. It's so fantastic. And we're really thrilled with the plans that we're starting to make about really creating a museum that's going to be, I think, a really important part of our community. So thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you, Mia. Thank you, Jessica, for both joining us and for your efforts conserving history within the Town of East Hampton. Take care and be well. So that brings us up to our last agenda item. But before we go to that, Michael, do you have any callers on the line?
We do not have any new callers, just that first caller who's been holding for this last item.
Okay, so let's go right into the agenda topic. And this is a continuation of discussion about recommendations to slow and improve traffic safety, primarily initially on Old Orchard Lane. But we also had been looking at putting a stop sign in at Middle Highway and Berryman. And we decided that it really required a more comprehensive look to address the traffic and, you know, speeding and safety issues within that area, as that's become a cut through. Councilman Bragman is going to lead us on this discussion. And I see that he's made some recommendations. Feel free to go ahead and present those.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to screen share this and I'm a little not sure it's gonna work, but we'll... I wanted to start with the recommendations in writing, just so you can see where they were proposed to add stop signs. These recommendations have all been reviewed by Chief Sarlo and also by the Highway Superintendent Steve Lynch. And it's quite a number of stop signs on Middle Lane, Middle Highway, I'm sorry. One in each direction at Tri-Works, one in each direction at Rose Avenue, one in each direction at Wooded Oak, and two stop signs at the turn where Middle Highway intersects Berryman, because that tends to be a corner around which people speed. So we would add one stop sign on the right-hand side of Berryman, where it meets Winslow as well. And once, and in the Old Orchard area, a stop sign on the lane that heads north to the Bob White Court intersection, just before the right turn on Old Orchard Lane toward Hans Creek. And then two additional stop signs on Old Orchard Lane, where it intersects roughed grouse. And there were some other recommendations. I don't know if I can move this document up.
I'm scrolling on the left, the right side of the screen there, the down arrow, the single down arrow. Or grab the slide bar on the right.
Oh yeah, hang on one second. Thank you. I need a little help here. Let's see if that works. Ah, voila. Yeah, so there were other requests for multiple speed signs on Berryman Street, which is a long straight residential street with no cross streets. And so it makes it a tempting design to speed on. A neighbor recommended renaming Middle Highway because he said it suggested high-speed arrest of driving. I don't know how much people pay attention to that. And painted white lines where the stop signs are may help to remind the drivers to stop there. And actually, one of the neighbors also recommended the placement of a no-through sign so that it wouldn't get on ways. And we've mapped them. You've all been sent these documents, but I'm gonna try to pull up this other document now. And let's go to screen share. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so you've seen this. I don't know, again, I'm having a little trouble. I don't know how to expand this and make it more readable. I don't know if anybody else has...
I do try just clicking on the attachment itself first.
That didn't work. Did you lose, did you lose it?
Yes.
Okay. Let me stop showing and start again. I'm sorry about this. It's supposed to be.
I can probably bring up the map in GIS and we could go through the various intersections.
That might be a good idea and then I can just screen share the, the recommendations.
Okay, let me see if I can do this effectively. You're gonna have to, oh, well, you have yours up now. David Lees has it. Okay. All right, David's brought it up. I don't know if you can enlarge it at all.
Yeah. Yeah, that's so that's, that's.
That's Middle Highway. The bottom of the screen is Tri-Works, then you have Rose is the next intersection, then at Wooded Oaks and Boatheaders. And then again, some additional at Berryman.
Correct.
So these recommendations were made by who exactly and?
These were made by a number of different neighbors who were concerned about slowing traffic, both in the Old Orchard area and then separately on Middle Highway. We, we had a number of letters that came in from a variety of neighbors. And these are the, the areas.
Did you circulate those with the other board members or?
I believe they came into the town board as a whole. Yeah, the letters. No?
No. I haven't seen. The only request I heard was Berryman and Old Orchard.
We, we received a couple about Tri-Works and then one gentleman wanted them up and down other location, but we, Tri-Works, we got a couple of letters, letters for there when we were discussing the Berryman discussion a long time ago.
We just compiled them all together in one so that, because we were looking to do a unified plan that dealt with entirety of Middle Highway and the Old Orchard neighbors. So we put them all on one map, so you could see them all together. This was the map that was shared with the police chief and the highway superintendent.
Okay, so there's also at the other end, at the east end of Berryman, you also have a stop sign.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that is Berryman. Oops, let me find it here.
So going through the discussion about.
That's where it meets Winslow Avenue, I believe. You're talking about the one in the upper right-hand corner. That's where it meets Winslow. Because that's part of the route to get back on.
It's a right angle intersection with Berryman that does not have a stop sign on it, on Berryman. So that's, you know, anytime you have a T-intersection and the, the right angle street doesn't have a stop sign, to me, that just seems incredibly dangerous and it's surprising that there's not one there already.
Yeah, and that's a common route. You know, that's the street that people turn on to get to Three Mile Harbor.
Well, on a perfectly straight roadway, you know, where there's no line of sight issues, this would strictly be a traffic calming measure. And in the past, I don't think that we've used stop signs for traffic calming measures alone, only at intersections where there was high, high number of traffic, high volume. I know we've added four-way stops at, in recent years, Abraham's Path and Occbionic Road, we've added four ways at Bluff Road and Atlantic Avenue. Those have worked out well. And while I think some people initially didn't really support them or thought it might be problematic, I think that it turned out to be a good idea. This seems like a lot of stop signs in a, in a very tight space. And I, and I wonder whether, you know, I could see certainly the, the Berryman stop signs. I think the board had, had previous discussions and agreed there needed to be stop signs there. I don't know about three additional intersections, but stop signs, that's just my own feeling. I don't know if the rest of the board, how the rest of the board feels about that.
I would agree with that. I think Tri-Works is a good spot because you get a lot of people leaping out of Tub, Tub Boarsman up Three Mile Harbor and going this direction.
Wouldn't that be a three-way stop there then? There's already a stop at, at Tri-Works, correct?
That, it would be, yes.
Yeah. So, board have any?
Yeah, well, it was always my understanding that you couldn't use stop signs for traffic calming, that you had to have, first of all, it had to be town roads that you were using and apparently Rose Avenue is not in the town, hi, in the state highway system. So I don't think you can do it at Rose Avenue, even if we wanted to. So, and I know that this, you know, obviously it goes to public hearing, then it has to go to the DOT and I know that, you know, they're, they don't look favorably on using stop signs for traffic calming and they typically ask, I think, for accidents that have occurred in that area. And I believe you've got to make a strong case when you want to put a stop sign in. I forwarded the proposal to Steve Lynch, because I've had so many conversations with him over the years about stop signs. And his response was, this is the first of seeing this. Rose Avenue is not a town road, so I'm not sure how that's going to work. And, and how do you regurgitate no-through traffic on a town-maintained road? So before a public hearing, please let me and David go over it. And then Chief Sarlo wrote back, not what I thought Steve would be able to do, given town roads. So I don't know. I think that this has to go maybe we ask Barnaby to put this on, you know, our, you know, on a map and take it, run it again past Steve and the chief to make sure it's something that we would have justification for when we go to the DOT.
So at this point, any other comments on, on that? And then if not, I, I believe the board was previously in favor of the stop signs at Berryman on this map. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, it's the, it's the one up in the, the way top, because there's, there's two on Berry. It's the single one?
The one, there's a single one at the far eastern end of the road there.
Is that the original one that was requested?
No, the original.
It was the ones, it was.
This one here?
Yes.
Okay. So then where did the, where did the single one come from?
That was, what, that was one of another neighbor, that was a neighbor recommended. Everything on here is, came in through a neighbor letter. How, how does the board feel about the stop sign at Tri-Works? Or do you want, do you just want to put all of this on a map and then send it through again? I think that would be fine.
I think it, yeah, put it on a map and send it to the, sit down with the chief and, and Steve Lynch and just make sure that, that we think we've got the rationale to go to the DOT to get their approval.
So I don't, I don't often travel Middle Highway, but I did think there might be, and maybe I'm wrong about this, but near Tri-Works, is there, is there a line of sight issue at all? I think there's some change in tobacco.
When you go, when you come down from Oakby Highway down Middle Highway, just past Tri-Works, it drops off significantly, maybe like 20 or 30 feet. So it's, it's just, it's, it's a long, long straight run. You also now have a commercial establishment in that area right now, pre-existing, non-conforming.
There's a stand line now.
Where there's a lot more truck traffic. There's, you know, the area of Whalebone, there's a lot of children in there. I think at a minimum, Tri-Works would be great just to be able to slow people down at least once on there right now, because there's a lot of traffic that, that's in that area already. And with, with Berryman, I, I think you, we would see some, some positive results that the neighbors would enjoy now and then we can re-assess it.
Okay.
How about all of the Old Orchard suggestions?
Sure, I'll bring those over, Jeff. Let me just. I'll let you go through those, Jeff.
Hang on one second. I have to pop this up on my phone. Middle Highway. Oh, here it is. Okay. So we're adding, or the, the neighbors recommended adding a stop sign on the right-hand side of Old Orchard Lane heading north at the Bob White Court intersection just before the right-hand turn to continue Old Orchard Lane toward Hans Creek.
So going southbound on Old Orchard, there would be a stop sign as it joins Bob White Court?
I believe that, that's correct. And then adding two stop signs, one in each direction on Old Orchard Lane where it intersects Rough Grouse Court. I think with the neighbors, that's, that's an area where, you know, people often are walking, have baby carriages or strolling into Rough Course. It's almost like a, you know, a location where people tend to yet have a lot of pedestrians and kids. And they want to make sure traffic slows down there because people coming through Old Orchard, you know, using the cutoff from Middle Highway, you know, are tending to view it as a, a quick path to Cedar Street. So it's kind of a reminder to slow down in a part of Old Orchard where there's a lot of pedestrian activity.
I'm supportive of those requests. Again, it's, it's just, it's just a way that people are traveling in the last 10 years. It's only increased, I think, potentially by putting these stop signs. I understand about a level of accidents. But if there's stop signs, a lot of times what Google is doing right now, they're just tracking your phone. And if everything slows down, they won't, they won't then recommend it on ways for the, for you to travel this direction. They might put you onto the larger road instead of taking you off. So I, I think it would, it would bring the neighborhoods back in, in these areas right now, because they were, they have been being taken over by speeding cars.
Do you have an idea, do you have an idea where this traffic's being generated from that's coming through to Cedar? Because, I mean, if it's Hans Creek, it's more direct if you go Stephen Hans Path, so it would have to be areas that are south of Stephen Hans Path intersection with Hans Creek. Are they cutting through like on Grape Harbor from Middle Highway or Atlantic Street?
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of it is traffic to Three Mile Harbor and Atlantic Street.
That's the Three Mile Harbor traffic cutting off near Springs to get to Cedar Street ultimately, just avoid Main Street.
That's my observation. And Atlantic is one of the ones that's, you know, the usual cutoff.
I mean, it's the bedroom, Springs is a bedroom community. People are just trying to get in and out.
So do we have any other, any other comments on the board? For this proposal?
Okay, I'll get, I can get Barnaby to put this on a, you know, a better map, circulate it around and we'll see, you know, what we come up, what we're.
And review it with the chief and Steve Lynch.
We, we, they both did get this map and I, I got much more innocuous comments from them than you, than you.
This map is, this map is challenging to.
Yeah, I know. It's not, it's not, it's not great.
Okay, and then if there aren't any other board comments at the moment, we do, I think, have a caller who called in about this discussion. I think it was Bethany Mendez.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, I'll unmute that caller right now.
I think she's a resident of Old Orchard, if I recall.
Yes, hello, Supervisor and the board. I thank you so much. This is Bethany Menzies. I am the co-owner of 34 Old Orchard Lane, which would be quite near where that one-stop sign where Old Orchard meets Bob White. So we're up on the hill. I thank you so much for, for hearing this, this matter. It was very well articulated by Councilmember Bragman. Thank you very much. I would just emphasize that at the 38 homes, the children and grandchildren, we gathered more than half of those people on Halloween for 90 minutes at a safe distance during the day, walking against traffic safely. And this was a big topic of that conversation. But that same number provided signatures, which we handed in during the time of, between Labor Day and, and as we know, during COVID. So we have a very strong community and a very frightened community. Their children and their grandchildren have been out here multiple, even in more than usual since March. And we are frightened. I myself have three dogs and every single morning at 7:00 AM, it is frightening. It is frightening no matter which direction. We've, we've had wonderful cooperation with, with highways and the police department enforcement and we've been supported. So we really appreciate everything we recognize. There's no silver bullet. It's silly to ask for, for speed bumps and closing the road, changing the speed limit. All those things are just kind of unnecessary if we can really recognize that there are three blind spots on this strip of a street of a lane that is 0.6 of a mile, three blind spots. It is frightening. And we've distracted driving and high speed coupled by high volume that is not seasonal. I can attest that it's not seasonal. So I do appreciate it. I've only, we've only owned this home for eight years and have never been out this long. But I can assure you that it is, just speaking for myself and 38 homeowners. We greatly appreciate this. We have beautiful nat, nature preserves. We'd rather spend our time and money keeping our community and our neighborhood safe and healthy and secure. Our wildlife, our pets, our children and our grandchildren and ourselves. So thank you so much for hearing this and for all of your hard work.
Thanks for taking the time, Bethany, to call us and speak with us today. We appreciate that. Mi, Michael, do we have any other callers on the line?
No, we do not.
Okay, so back, back to our discussion. It sounds like at this point, we're, we're going to work on getting, Jeff, you're gonna work on getting some approved maps with Barnaby and we'll revisit with the chief and Steve Lynch, highway superintendent.
Yes, and I'll circulate it to the board once that's.
We'll try to get it back on the agenda as soon as all that's completed and time allows. Thank you very much, Jeff. That leads us to liaison reports. Kathy, do you have a liaison report today?
Yeah, I just, you know, once again, want to remind folks out there that if you know the senior, anyone over the age of 60, that's in, in, you know, can't get to the grocery store or is looking for someone to cook for them. We're delivering prepared meals to our seniors. And they get five, you know, frozen meals that they can then just heat up. Plus they get oatmeal and fresh fruit and tea bags and bread and all kinds of treats that go along with that. Since March 10th through last Friday, we have delivered over 44,000 meals to our seniors, which is just incredible. And when I talk to folks in other communities and they hear what we do, they're, they're just, I don't think any other community, at least in Suffolk County, is doing what we're doing for our community and our seniors. We're also making weekly wellness calls. We're all, town staff also continues to be available to pick up and deliver free of charge, you know, groceries, prescriptions and other essentials. All the senior needs to do is make sure that the, the store that they're, they're using, you know, takes credit cards in advance and we can pick up their prescriptions and whatnot. We've also gotten some inquiries about senior transportation. As the board knows, we have temporarily suspended our senior transportation program because of the pandemic, as we do not want to put our seniors or our town staff at undue risk. So for those seniors that have no other way to get to, say, medical appointments, the town's Human Services Department has been recommending the Suffolk County Accessible Transportation, also known as SCAT. I know you've seen the, the mini buses throughout the town. They offer transportation Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 8:30 and weekends from 7:00 AM to 8:30 AM. And the feedback that we've received from seniors has been quite positive. So if there's a senior out there that's needed, in need of transportation, please reach out to our caseworker, Liliana Rodriguez, at 631-329-6939. And Liliana can explain the options and provide assistance in, in filling out the application that's required. Next up, Drug Takeback Day. We had such a successful Drug Takeback Day on October 24th that we had a second one this past Saturday here at Town Hall. And we've collected approximately 150 pounds of unused or expired prescription medications and over-the-counter and pet medications. And, you know, you know, these medications, if, you know, flushed down the toilet or thrown out, you know, can be a, a real public safety issue. And also we've learned from, you know, work on the Substance Abuse, Adolescent Mental Health and Substance Use Task Force, that it's also sometimes a gateway medication that's in the, in the medicine cabinet for, for folks to have accidental poisoning, misuse or overdose. So grateful to Kenny Alversa and East Hampton Town Police Department for, for organizing and staffing that. Spring CAC met last month on October 20th via Zoom. They passed a resolution regarding police reform. Unfortunately, I haven't gotten the final language of that resolution, so once I have it. So once I have it, I will circulate that. Another topic that came up for discussion is the culvert at Old Stone Highway. It's folks know it's scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty-two. We have that project in our in our three-year capital plan with a little over a million dollars. And what the committee talked about was, given the great deal of pedestrian traffic and bicycles going over the bridge, the CAC wanted to know if that bridge could be engineered to be wider for safer travels. So I reached out to Steve Lynch, and it is something we would need to speak to the engineers about to see, one, if it's doable, and, b, what it would cost. It may be cost prohibitive, but it's, you know, it's always worth inquiring. Safe Rugs to School Project. This was something that was started back in, hard to believe, twenty thirteen. It's been seven years in the making. They Keith Grimes had gotten that bid. They are they're finished right now. They've gone as far as they can. They've put in the sidewalk that extends on the west side of Springs Fireplace Road from Woodbine up to Gardner's Avenue. And that, you know, the purpose obviously was to make it for, which is why it's called Safe Rugs to School, right? Is to make it safer for our kids who live on the west side of Springs Fireplace Road to walk to school. It's also it's part of that engineering project. The intersection was realigned so that it's a shorter distance for the kids to cross the street. So folks on the Spring CAC had some comments regarding the project. They felt that it was difficult to make a right-hand turn from Gardner's to Springs Fireplace Road, that FGVs had to swerve when we're in the incoming lane. They felt that the intersection may not be safe as it's too narrow. So I reached out to Steve Lynch, and, you know, he said, please bear with us. It is still a construction site. The the orange barrels are still, you know, in the road. Steve and his is bringing in Rosemar this week. They're going to be paving from Wood Milling and Paving from Woodbine to just past the Old Barn Store. And then, once that milling and paving is done, then Keith Grimes, this group, is going to come back and line the roads. So, you know, we should look at it then. But we should also keep in mind that that section of Springs Fireplace Road is incredibly narrow. There is really no shoulder whatsoever. So once you add, you know, a five-foot wide sidewalk, it it was going to be tight. And again, we got to go back to the purpose of this was to make it safe for our kids who are walking back and forth from school. So, you know, so for those, you know, large vehicles, whether they be landscaping trucks with trailers, you know, they may need to use, you know, an alternate route if if indeed it is, you know, tight for them. Or, you know, maybe ultimately, folks will slow down there, you know, because we do see speeding there. Oh, it's thirty miles an hour. So folks may have to, you know, slow down. But I think the the objective of the project was to make it safe for our kids. And and we'll have met that objective, and we should just wait until all the paving is complete. CAC also brought up the Springs Library's new roof. I know that that project has been bonded for. We have a roofing company that gave us, you know, a good cost because they were on contract. And the CAC was wondering, would the work begin before winter? And I don't know if that's something. I know that the library now is under the Property Management Committee. I don't know if it was discussed as to what the status of that project is.
So the the library roof, I'll just jump in. I mean, the library roof exceeded the cost that we can take on contract. So it had to be rebid.
Okay.
So we're trying to get that out and back. I'd still like to see that that roof construction begin before the end of the year. I think that's a possibility. So hopefully, we can get that returned and awarded as soon as possible. As soon as we can get through that process, we'll be underway.
Okay.
There is ample money for the project.
That's great news. They'll be happy to hear that. And then the other thing that came up was communications, both personal wireless and emergency communications. And they the CAC was looking for an update. Now, I know I saw on the agenda, we've got the resolution to hire Cityscape, the telecommunications firm that's going to be helping us with coverage maps and a wireless master plan and the legislation. So they were asking, when do we think we would see updated legislation? And when is it anticipated that the Communications Committee that Peter, you had brought up a month or two ago, would be appointed?
Yes, so the the committee itself, you know, I hope the board members can help finalize that list. I had several individuals on that list, and we can discuss, you know, further appointees in exact today, hopefully, and come to some conclusions and have that committee appointed as soon as we have the membership. So board members, again, if you have people to suggest for that. We do have some names already from my office.
That's great, because I know they are very anxious to see movement, you know, given the critical need for.
I am.
Yeah. No, they, you know, they're always holding my feet to the fire, which is why I bring it up.
That's that's what CAC.
That's and that's their role, correct?
Their role, let us know, you know, what their concerns are, and it's up to us to, you know, respond effectively, so.
Okay, and now I'd just like to share share my screen for a feel-good PowerPoint. You'll indulge me. Okay, great. So last month, Supervisor, myself, and members of the Human Services staff participated in the East Hampton Town Senior Nutrition Program as they celebrated our members that were over ninety. And what you see here is actually the banner that was on the side of the senior transportation buses. They were rigged to the bus. It was quite a show going across the Nappeak Stretch. But we visited, you know, the homes of seniors over the course of four days. And I had brought this up at an earlier an earlier work session, but it's just too good not to share and and just go into a little detail. So each year, both the East Hampton and Montauk Senior Nutrition Programs celebrate their their members who have reached the beautiful age of ninety or older. It's usually a luncheon at the center during the summer with their family members invited. But this year, you know, due to COVID, we needed to be creative, so we came up with the idea of mobile visits to the homes of our members. We've got we had banners on the town bus. Peter, his office, you know, composed beautiful proclamations for each of the seniors. We ordered many birthday cakes, and we put together a list. There were forty-one seniors in the town of East Hampton that, you know, ranged in age from ninety to a hundred and two. So we, because there were, you know, we needed to do this over the course of a few days, we broke it down by hamlet. And so we went out to Wednesday. We went to Northwest and Sarek Harbor. We hit up Springs, East Hampton Village, and now McGanson, and then Montauk. All the seniors were called from the bus prior to the visit so they could be ready to celebrate with us, wearing a mask and at a safe distance. And some of our seniors seniors had their family members present as well. Michelle Basilico, who's our East Hampton Senior Nutrition Program Supervisor, Therese Germaine from the Montauk Nutrition Program, Iris Iris Mitchell, who's also a board member, the Montauk Nutrition Program, and our Director of Human Services, Diane Patrizio, were instrumental in coordinating this mobile party. Sue Trotman, our Transportation Supervisor, and Carol Bennett, our bus driver, handled the route navigation. And I don't think there's anything. I mean, they were. Could there be anything more stressful than having the supervisor following you behind in the bus, making sure you're signaling and?
They passed with line colors.
They did. It was incredible. They were Sue and Carol were cool as a cucumber. And then Peter and myself joined the party caravan in in our separate cars. So it was truly a team effort and a joyous four days. So I just have a few photos of the seniors whose homes we visited. Now, you can see we're socially distanced. We're wearing our masks and and well, you you can see the smiles in our eyes because it was just, it was so heartwarming to be there. We saw Doris Rodriguez, who's ninety-three, Mary Curles, ninety-six, Paul Cowmeyer, ninety-four, and Joan Brill, ninety. You know, we had folks offering, you know, wanted us to come into their house, and they'd make a cup of tea. Some were remarking on how, you know, they they wouldn't be able to make do. They wouldn't. They didn't have to leave the house because of the meals that we were providing. They were asking about how other folks from the center were doing. I mean, it was just beautiful. A few more. Eleanor Fendle, ninety-six, Scott Jackson, ninety-one. And as you can see, I don't know if the pictures are small, but Peter had gone to the extent of he picked up red roses and extended a red rose along with the proclamation and the cake. And we were joking that it was a little bit like The Bachelor with the rose. But we had Jackie Vaughn, ninety-three, and Diane Patrizio isn't in any of the pictures because she gets photo credit. We also Gene Ruggles, ninety-two, out in Montauk, Ed Nauer, ninety-five, and Vera Lazzarich, ninety-six. I believe there's one more. Oh, and then we had we we went and saw Julia Kaiser and her husband Leroy. And as you know, Julia is a big letter writer to the Star. And just this past week, she had a letter to the editor. Town Supervisor Peter Van Sgoick and Councilwoman Kathy Burgonzo drove by the homes of seniors in their nineties. We always had a nineties party at the Senior Center in June. Now the center is closed. Because of COVID, they came to us. They gave us our proclamation celebrating our age. They were accompanied by Michelle Basilico, Nutrition Supervisor, and the staff at the center. They gave every senior an individual cake. Everyone wore a mask. The staff takes very good care of us. We will be we all miss going to the center and the activity. East Hampton is the place for seniors. I'm ninety-two, and my husband is ninety-five, Julia Kaiser. And then, lastly, I this is the folks that have been able to bring, you know, so much comfort and to our seniors. So kudos to our Human Services staff for all they do, the the cooking, the phone calls, the, you know, delivery of these of the food. And then, you know, going to, you know, those four days, it was hard to wipe the smile off your face because they were just so grateful and so taken aback that we would, you know, we would stop to do this for them. And I don't know, Peter, you had a beautiful proclamation, which I didn't have an opportunity to get a copy of. And I don't know if you want to share with everyone what you, you know, said to the seniors when you when you greeted them.
I don't have a copy of the proclamation, but essentially acknowledging and celebrating them as as, you know, humans. Having that human contact with each and every one of them was really wonderful. I have to say, it really brightened my four days of driving around and seeing many of the seniors who I've gotten to know over the years, visiting the Senior Center at the nineties party and have, you know, playing music at the picnic and whatnot. And basically acknowledging the fact that our seniors are such a valuable resource to us and sadly, somewhat untapped resource. They, you know, have vast experience of of many challenging times, the, you know, World War Two, other tumultuous times, the Great Depression. They've lived through so much. They're such a wealth of knowledge and, you know, protecting our most venerable generation and honoring and celebrating them is really, I think, important and something we should never lose sight of. So it was truly heartwarming. I I got at least as much out of doing this as they did in having us there. You can see how excited and heartwarming it was for them. So happy to see the familiar faces and the staff members. And, you know, Kathy, what a great job you've done, Human Services, throughout the pandemic. Sorry, I'm going to get a little emotional. It's it's really been fantastic. And Diane Patrizio and all the dedicated staff at our Senior Center, providing so many meals. And those meals are so important to our our seniors who are at such risk during the pandemic. And for them to know that there are others who care about them and that they wouldn't have to go out. And frankly, they all said the food was really good. And when they started rattling off the menu, I'm thinking, wow, I'm I'm over sixty. I do have I do have somebody who cooks more than me, too, is really wonderful. But if I was in that situation where I was by myself, how much that would mean to me. And I know that I've received a number of calls and emails from concerned family members who have elderly parents who live in town, that were unable to travel to see them and make sure that they were okay. And when they found out the type of services that we provided here, they'd contact my office, and I'd run through and put them in touch with Human Services. They were so thankful and relieved that people were there to care and help out their their beloved ones if they got in a situation or whatnot. So just it's such a wonderful program. Kathy, you said you don't think any other community has a program like this on Long Island. I can attest to the fact that they do not. We are the envy of Long Island when it comes to our senior programs. And, you know, that's a credit to you and and our and our staff members in Human Services. So I can't say enough about it because it 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 really was so heartwarming and so great to see see people. You know, I'm so isolated here at Town Hall and in my office, my little bubble. And to be able to get out and see some folks was really awesome.
Yeah, and they understood, you know, that all of them, as much as they missed the center, they understand, like, why we have to be closed now and that we don't have a date where we're going to be reopening. But but they're just so grateful for all of them.
They appreciated that we were looking out for them when this thing broke, you know, the the steps we took. So again, thank you, Kathy.
I I just want to say to Kathy, thank you so much for all that you've done through this pandemic. And and before that, when you started the working with the Senior Center, I have to say, some of the 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 fun times that I've had is going to the parties at the Senior Center. And I missed the ninety-year-old party that that we used to go to because they're so much fun. I missed the Halloween party, which is always a blast. How inventive and creative those seniors are, how much, you know, again, laughing a lot through that whole, you know, party, the same with the the Christmas party and the picnic. You know, these are some things that that I enjoy seeing from our seniors, and they they light up my life, which is I'll get emotional. Anyway, I miss them.
Yes, we do. We miss them. But they feel our love. Good.
Thank you, Kathy. David, do you have a liaison report?
I do. Thank you. Thank you very much. I was I'll start with land management. Land management has been working on multiple cleanups. They've been cleaning up, again, the Grace Estate. There's been litter up at Kirk's Place, partying. They've been revisiting the property, trying and thinking about if they have to impose more restrictions up there. But it seems at a place where individuals are gathering right now. We want to make sure that doesn't get out of control. There has been more recent dumping of household refuse at Brooks Park. Land Management has cleaned it up twice so far. Land Management has also helped revitalize some of the faded kiosk maps, the Clodin Point, Rod's Valley, and the East Hampton Side Harbor Trail. They were all replaced. They're continuing on some mowing projects right now in our areas, and that big meadow, Jacob's Farm and such, for some of the trails. Beat them back a little bit before the grasses go dormant. Also, there's an update of trail maps, updated trail maps. For the town, trails are almost complete, and they'll be on the website and very shortly imprinted. And they can actually end up also potentially contacting the town clerk for a printed copy or also Land Management. Land Management also did a cleanup at Rod's Valley, recently replacing fencing. I don't know if everyone was aware, there was actually a fire out of Rod's Valley, which is at the end of Navy Road this summer, by by someone having fireworks out there, I believe it was. And so people have been driving on there. So they've been doing some cleanups of that property recently also. We want to also let you know that hunting seasons have opened within town. Bowhunting, deer began on October first. Small game seasons have of small game seasons vary according to their species, but most are in effect as of. Small game seasons vary according to their species, but most are in effect as of November first. Goose, duck, turkey, waterfowl, they're all begin on November twenty-first. All hunting seasons for our area are listed in the back of our town hunting guide, which is available at the town clerk's website, if anyone's interested. For recreation, the town, Peter might be mentioning this a little later, but for the town of East Hampton's Recreation Department, and they're out of an abundance of caution, I believe Peter will go into it later, we are immediately canceling the fall soccer season. The recreation department is going to be reaching out to the coaches and also all of the parents. I actually just got a text message from one of my best friends who's a coach that says, "You suck." I had undefeated season going. That's a joke.
You sure it was about that day, but?
Yeah, it is. It's not about my football season.
Penn State, not so good this year.
Not so good this year, buddy.
Yeah, you got me again. Now on live TV.
Anyway, so out of abundance of caution, that season's going to be canceled because of the uptick in COVID. I also want to let everyone know that this is the time right now, if they are a runner or a walker, want to go participate in the East Hampton Town's virtual Turkey Run, which is not being held this year on Thanksgiving Day, which is upcoming. Please go to the town's website and please join in. Remember, all proceeds of the Turkey Run go to our three local food banks. Please participate if you want. That's funny. Okay, aquaculture. Aquaculture was, the opening of scalp season was this Sunday. I did participate in some wonderful, delicious scalps. We don't have, we don't have a sense of the season yet. I'll get some more information to you in the next couple of weeks about how the scalp season, the scalp sets are looking. We've heard some information, it wasn't as great, but I'll make sure we'll get some more information from.
I can give you an update on that.
Let's see, that leads me into the Fisheries Advisory Committee. The Fisheries Advisor Committee is actually meeting tomorrow, but I want to let the board members know this, that I just recently received the resignation from former town councilman and chairman of the Fisheries Advisory Committee, Brad Lowen. He's resigning to be more with the family right now, let the next generation move into the position that he helped craft when he was on the town council. I want to thank him for his lifetime of work and advocacy. This is to Brad Lowen specifically. Lifetime advocacy for the local fishing industry. And even more specifically, being the genesis and taking on the leadership role for the FAC over the last decade. As the board knows, we will appoint someone else. But again, I just want to thank him for his dedication and leadership to the town as not just a former town councilman, but also as a continued leader of the fishing industry out here. The Highway Department. I sat in on a meeting with Steve Lynch, our town engineers, the state DOT engineers, and state DOT hydraulic engineers for a discussion of the intersection at Stephen Hand's path in one fourteen. The reason why we sat in all together is to make sure a coordination of all the state projects and the potential towns, drainage projects in that area, we were all coordinating as, working together as one. I think it was part of good government, as I mentioned to the group there. They're looking at trying to alleviate some hydraulic pressures of the flooding that's become historic and now public safety in that area. Making intersections safer, potentially widening it for traffic and turning lanes on there. So they're looking at this also. And multiple designs that would also include a bike connectivity path that has been requested. And we're looking at potentially from one fourteen, the long lane to get you down to the Village of East Hampton. So it was a coordination of all those efforts. I know we went out, for our aspect of engineering for that drainage some time ago. Peter actually moved that forward and sponsored that. And I just want to let you know, that project's still moving forward and being coordinated well between all the state and the town. Later today, I have a resolution on next today. It's on, it was submitted to amend the budget for the Nelson and Pope Engineering for the Side Harbor Stormwater Abatement Project. This is a, some modification to move funding around within their existing budget for the project. There's no increase in cost. The town is assisting through the Water Quality Technical Advisory Funds for the installation phase of the permanent pavement at Bay Street. This is from two thousand, first round for two thousand and nineteen on Bay Street and Rain Guards and Marine Park. And their engineer requests modifications so they can do site visits to ensure the work is completed correctly and built correctly. So that's on for later today. Sylvia, I know you, I'm gonna give you some more information about this. This just came across my desk. Also, for Montauk, finally, it looks like the Lowenstein Pipe Repair at a Montauk, and also the Fabico Helix Vault are ready to be installed. The installer is ready. They called in for the final utility markouts. They are looking to schedule the work the week after Thanksgiving, so the week starting of November thirtieth. Duration, estimated duration for installation is approximately two weeks, but it might take less than that, of course, weather dependent. We wanted to notify the board that the work is ready to be, ready to move forward and make sure there wouldn't be any issues scheduling for eleven-thirty. We're doing outreach to not just property owners, but also businesses in that area. So overall, Surfside Place will be closed during the pipeline installation and vault installed, and will be reopened nightly. There will be walking access, but no driving access to the southern eastern complex of Surfside Club during hours in which they're working excavating and installation. And there will also be a partial closure of Surfside Avenue, but will still be accessible. I'll send this information over to you, Sylvia, so you can get out to the CAC member. They're coordinating with Highway Department and National Resources for this project with a contractor engineer. But it's a long-term project coming that will increase our, the fluid that's going on to the beach there and try to get those, the bacteria and carcinogens caught in that filter. Lastly, I wanted to thank the Amagansett School Girl Scout Troop Four Twenty-One. The girls, I think they're about fifth grade. They invited me to talk at their meeting yesterday as an elected official just post our national election and local election, mostly national elections from this past Tuesday. I want to thank them for taking their time out and asking me to come speak. They truly are the next generation of voters, these little girls. They were great. They work, they're working towards earning their junior inside government badge. And they also were celebrating the Centennial Women's Suffrage, as well as they marked, were marking the election of the first female vice president in United States history. They presented me with this wonderful little badge, which I'll keep on my desk. I wanted to say to them, Merritt Carrance, who was their troop leader, the questions that they were asking of me were just spectacular, okay? You could see they're getting a good education in Amagansett and in East Hampton. They were lively. We do have future leaders coming through the ranks, Levonic out here. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. And if you have any questions, little girls, please contact me anytime. And that's my liaison report. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Sylvia?
Sure. The Montauk CAC met last Monday. The discussions that we had were concerning the number of homes in Montauk that are on the rental registry. And they're specifically concerned with the short-term rentals that they still see to be a problem. And, you know, ways on how to fix it. They'd like code enforcement to come to one of their meetings soon, so they can kind of discuss it with code enforcement itself. The Beach Committee had also met and gave a report, their concerns. And this is their own, within the Montauk CAC Beach Committee. Their own report was about fires, dogs on the beach, beach cleanings, and code enforcement. They had several ideas that they will discuss with the Beach Advisory Group that David Leese is heading. And I believe they sent you a letter, actually, that just got here this morning, David. So it'll be in your email on some of the.
I just haven't had a chance to read it.
Yeah, yeah. No, it just came this morning, just as we were getting ready to meet. They are also concerned about the intersection of North Shore Road, Industrial, and Second House. It's where the PSEG substation is being built. And John, you may want to weigh in on this, too. PSEG is going to fix that intersection and do the engineering for that intersection. And I understand that you already have some of the information for the getting that completed. And it's also working with Steve Lynch, who is part of the process. So I did get in touch with Steve. There seem to be some really big potholes that are there right now. And Steve is going to be repairing those, but it is a stopgap measure until PSEG project is completed. And at this time, I don't have a timeline. And I don't know, John, if you have a timeline for this project and the roads to really, in that intersection, to be completed.
Sylvia, I could add just a little bit to that discussion. In looking for a site for a new substation, we, you know, we looked at thirteen potential properties and ultimately ended up at the location on North, on Shore Road, where they're building the new substation. As part of the location agreement, they are going to decommission the old substation and convert that to passive park use on Fort Pond, probably with parking and kayak access, for instance. And they also agreed to pay for the raising of the road at the intersection. You talked about Industrial Shore Road and Second House Road in that corner, which has, the flooding there has gotten worse and worse. Some of it may be due to the construction in the area, but also we know that we've seen similar problems all over town due to just the amount of rain coming in shorter and shorter periods of time has really exacerbated flooding in a lot of intersections. So they're going to pay for the raising of that road and pavement of it. I think ultimately, we'll have to do the work and there'll be an agreement with them as to the payment. And John, if you have anything else that you can add. I don't know whether the specific language has been ironed out on that yet or not, but I think we're getting closer.
Yeah, we got some preliminary language that I gave some comments back to PSEG already on it. And you know, it started relatively a short time ago. I think your description is accurate. Looks like we will likely be the ones that are doing the work by way of contracting out for it with PSEG agreeing to pay all the costs related to it and also designing it. That's all on, you know, to be designed under our supervision with consultants of our choice. So I don't have a timeline yet. I did ask for a little more information to see if they had anything in mind. I haven't gotten a response yet on that. I just reached out to them yesterday on it, though, so.
Well, I've discussed this with Steve Lynch in the past, and he wanted to go out to engineering, but it's, we, is this a sense that we would have to bond for engineering for the project and be reimbursed, John, PSEG?
Not necessarily. There is a proposal, the proposal seems to offer us upfront money based on estimated estimated cost of work, which would be adjusted depending on what the actual costs are. So I think we might get actually cash in hand to do the, to cover those costs upfront.
Thank you.
I think the concern for the CAC is that they'll go through another winter of that road being torn up, flooded, icy, the things that happen, and it's dangerous. And so, you know, Steve is well aware of this and will do the best he can and was certainly very responsive to me when I called and said there were some potholes there that he didn't know about. And he was sending somebody immediately out there to work on it. So it's just going to be an ongoing process until that whole section is completed. They also discussed the sidewalks on Old Montauk Highway. I also spoke to Steve Lynch. He is slowly replacing the sidewalks. They will not be pink anymore. And they only, they will terminate at gurneys. That was another issue. I think that the CAC would like, some members evidently wanted to see that sidewalk extended a bit. The reason there aren't going to be pink, according to Steve, is that they are costing three times as much if they put a color into the sidewalk. So they will be replaced with just regular concrete. The Community Housing Opportunity Fund Committee met. They had a unanimous decision encouraging the town to adopt the Affordable Housing Overlay on Three Mile Harbor property, which is that fourteen-acre site that we have been looking at and, you know, considering whether or not to do the Affordable Housing Overlay. The Arts Council also met. We have two new potential members. And so we're happy to see more artists wanting to join. The upcoming, they want to look at sponsoring another seminar on Zoom or possibly in person, if it's possible in the springtime, that would help artists with copyright issues or artist gallery agreements and estate issues that they might have. They've done one of these in the past, or maybe, I think they've done two. And so they'd like to continue to do more. They seem to have a full house when they have these seminars. They're also planning for another spring or early summer type of social distancing art show, similar to the one that they did called Art of Heart. They're going to change it up a little bit and make it a little bit different, but that's all, you know, to be done after the first of the year. And Peter, you gave us a Tesla update, which is one of the, so that's fine. And I want to talk about the Business Recovery Group. We did not meet last Wednesday, and we're not meeting this Wednesday because it's Veterans Day. The next meeting is on the eighteenth, but on the seventeenth, work session agenda is going to be, again, looking at the actual legislation for outdoor dining. So Nancy Lynn will present it. It's written, I think, John, she's got it on your desk to look over to see that it's, you know, something that she can present on Tuesday, the seventeenth. Okay, great. And I just, this is sort of going to dovetail with what David, you were saying. The Energy Sustainability Committee is part of, you know, doing some work with, you know, the recycling and working as, you know, that is part of folded into what they're doing. We did have, and we're trying to expand, the idea of carry-in, carry-out. This works with trails, beaches, anyplace people want to go on our public lands that they are sure that they understand that they should, whatever they take with them, they need to bring it out the same way and not leave it for others to have to pick up after them or for it to affect our environment or other people's enjoyment of those beautiful lands and our beaches. So we will have a post that's up already on Facebook and Twitter, talking about, we hope people do enjoy our beaches and trails, but please remember to carry in, carry out. So that is all I have for today.
Thank you, Sylvia. Jeff, do you have a liaison report? Jeff, you're muted?
Yes, I see that. You have animals in the house. It's a good idea. I met with the Wayne Scott CAC, and we had the usual thorough, their usual thorough meeting. They took an entire meeting essentially to focus on the Orsted Deepwater Project and the routing of the cable landing through Beach Lane. It was a presentation by the Citizens for the Preservation of Wayne Scott, so it was, I think it's fair to say it was in opposition to the landing at Beach Lane. And they essentially were critical of the fact that there hasn't yet been an independent evaluation of alternative routes. And that Orsted is really the prime mover in routing the proposed cable over Beach Lane. And while they did at one point promise that they would present alternatives to consider, this group who opposes the landing felt that the alternative of, you know, coming through Hither Hills Park was something of a poison pill and designed to, you know, not be a pragmatic solution. They did focus on sort of the mechanics of routing from the landing site through the town at a couple of different locations and seemed to focus on the possible use of the Long Island Railroad route as a possible location for the cable, as it traveled, the terrestrial part of the cable as it traveled to the substation. And they pointed out that, you know, if the Long Island Railroad route could be used in the eastern section coming i- in the eastern section coming from Beach Lane, it could probably be used similarly uh, to the west. Um, and it it led into a discussion to to some extent on, you know, some of the other aspects of the project. Um, a number of people raised the question of, you know, why, why each um, uh, leaseholder, why each company that holds a wind farm lease is planning to install its own uh, infrastructure. It seemed to make more sense to to um, these uh, residents if uh, a- access and uh, um, the landing uh, were were joined together for a whole bunch of projects. And there are, there are some uh, there's actually even a deepwater project very near um, this Orsted um, location. Uh, that a number of neighbors thought was uh, suitable to link up in a in a unified uh, path uh, to reach uh, a location probably more toward the middle of the island where the power could uh, go uh, both ways. And so they were strongly advocating uh, uh, a little bit more efficiency. Um, they also noted that um, just two weeks ago, uh, Orsted indicated that there was going to be a significant delay in the review process and that the project uh, probably would not be now operational till a year later, which is twenty twenty-three, and they felt that that was reason to um, slow down the consideration of Beach Lane, um, at least long enough to get what they called an independent assessment of the routes. And a number of people noted that at this point, oh, really, the driver uh, for the Beach Lane location is Orsted and their contention is that it's um, uh, it was driven because it's it's the most profitable route uh, for them uh, to use and that um, a number of people were suggesting uh, the need for a careful assessment of alternatives. Um, they're aware of the settlement uh, process having ended and noted that it didn't end the review. Um, and that they were hoping that when it got in front of an administrative law judge, um, that the uh, the review would focus on um, alternatives. And they noted that many of the conditions um, for the, I think, most of the conditions for the issuance of a certificate deal with um, uh, alternative alternatives of the certification conditions. They cite one hundred and ninety-five and they said all but eight of them apply to um, an assessment of alternatives. So it was um, it was a uh, a factual discussion. It wasn't, I think there was, you know, more heat, uh, more light than heat. Um, there wasn't a lot of arguing or bickering, but uh, they were attempting to bring out some facts uh, to suggest that uh, now might be a good time to slow down and they were not, I have to say they're not happy with the press that they've read that indicates that the town is uh, moving forward with um, uh, its plans to grant the easement prior to the completion of the uh, of the uh, Article Seven review. But as I said, it was um, a civilized discussion. Um, there was, uh, you know, uh, there were uh, point counterpoint throughout on a number of the issues and uh, I think most folks came away thinking uh, that we knew a little bit more about the project. Uh, and some of the the highlights than they did before the meeting.
Jeff, did the CPW presentation, is that in a form that can be circulated to the town board?
Uh, it was recorded, um, I believe at your request and um, I think that the plan is to uh, circulate the recording to you. Uh, and then uh, I guess you can distribute it to the board if.
Okay, I'll I'll look for that and receive the.
Yeah, I think she's planning to to do that.
That'd be helpful. Uh, not all of us are available to uh, you know, jump on that CAC meeting.
Yeah, and it was, it was the long meeting. It was not, this was, you know, a pretty long.
Three hours.
Yeah, and they had, they did have some experts there. They had um, someone who was an electrical engineer who, you know, had some uh, interesting technical uh, information. They had an attorney, their attorney there uh, who, you know, uh, illuminated some of the, you know, discussion points when it came uh, came up, when they they touched on the law. Um, so I, as I said, I think in the end it was uh, it was informative. I don't know that anybody reached any conclusions, but it was uh, a helpful discussion to have. Um, that that's the only one of my uh, committee assignments that's met since the last meeting. And I just wanted to also say that um, I I've been in touch with Fred, uh, Fred Fields Office. He was grateful um, that we uh, voted on a memorializing resolution to support uh, you know, the extension of the power of the Public Service Commission, uh, to have some enforcement power over LIPA um, PSEG. And um, you know, in light of our, you know, recent discussions about CCA, um, it's possible that this kind of oversight will help with uh, making CCA uh, more easily viable for towns. So it's it's a very good step, although the focus is on transparency and accountability. Ultimately, um, I have a feeling um, that it may lead into some clarifications uh, of some issues that will will affect our ability to really um, employ, deploy CCA, even if we do it with a neighboring community. So it is very important. And it's uh, it's been uh, it's been forwarded to the governor's desk and he was very grateful to to know that.
Jeff, can I ask you a question? Did the Wayne Scott CAC have any questions, comments about the Little League ball fields being relocated to Stephen Hans Path?
Yes, they did. Um, they uh, discussed uh, we didn't discuss really the locate, the location. I didn't hear much discussion about the location of the ball fields. Um, but they were concerned about the use of artificial turf. And they're going to send a letter to the town board. I don't know whether it will include anything on the location or just the the turf, but they indicated they were going to send a letter out to the town board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So I'm going to start with a a COVID update and frankly, the news is not great. Now, while we've enjoyed low rates of infection in Suffolk County um, of one percent or less uh, up until just three weeks ago, um, this past couple of days, we're now seeing uh, an increase in the positives that is four times higher than what we've been uh, seeing pretty consistently, where we had a range of new positives in the forty or fifty to up to a hundred. Uh, now we're seeing three hundred and twenty-four cases on the eighth. Uh, this is four time increase. Uh, I guess it's not, it shouldn't be unexpected uh, due to the fact that schools are back in session. And uh, you know, we're while we, there are still some restrictions on occupancy, you know, our economy is mostly open. Um, with colder weather approaching and with schools in session, the uptick in cases uh, was expected. Um, and I think there's a certain amount of fatigue, wearing masks. Uh, people have gotten a little relaxed maybe about how important it is to just wash your hands very regularly. Um, and to social distance, uh, to be cautious when you're out and about near other people. Um, you know, that's, that's the downside. Long Island wise, wide, excuse me, four uh, three point four percent positivity. Recent testing, as reported by Newsday, we had, I got a, I received a call from Rich Burns who uh, Spindel, the superintendent uh, of East Hampton Unified School District. Um, he's in transition now with the new superintendent. But uh, he called me to say that the John Marshall, they had cases in the fourth and fifth grades. And um, we have a a fall soccer youth program that's run by the town uh, that has children in the same age groups and out of an abundance of caution. Uh, you know, we've decided to curtail that a couple of weeks early. He was wrapping up the end of the season. Um, but uh, you know, I think uh, we have to be prepared unfortunately to be taking steps backwards. I know the village just recently uh, did a one eighty on their in-person meetings uh, that they had started. So they're now doing remote meetings only as we're doing now today. Um, and not inviting the public in. Uh, again, to uh, respond and try to stay ahead of the spread of this infection. The good news is that Pfizer has come out with uh, a vaccine that is expected to um, be quite effective. Honestly, it will require that a a large number of people actually take the vaccine uh, once circulated. There are other manufacturers that are also in stage four uh, trials uh, and also show great promise. So I think uh, that we will have a vaccine that starts being distributed likely to uh, first responders and healthcare professionals and those at highest risk first. Um, but again, I'll just remind everybody uh, to to please, you know, try to be vigilant. I know this is really wearing on. And uh, it it's difficult to keep in your mindset that you need to be careful about touching surfaces and washing your hands and of course, wearing your mask. But this is the most effective tool that we have available to us right now and will for the foreseeable future. It's going to take a while for the vaccines to get ramped up and distributed. That's a major uh, logistical um, you know, project. Um, I wanted to give you an update on uh, the solar roof on the Parks Building.
Here, before you go into that, Peter, could I just ask you something about COVID? Um, um, you know, we're, we're getting very close to the Thanksgiving holidays and um, I think it's probably a good idea for us to be working on some townwide messaging.
Yeah, that's actually going out, uh, the social posts, uh, media posts coming up and um, that will be part of our reinforcing of it's a good idea, Jeff. We've already gotten it in the queue.
And are we consulting, uh, you know, Dr. Polsky on? I know there is no, I checked, there's no executive order on it yet, but I do think it's important for us to get that out as quickly as possible because I'm sure with your family in mind, people are going to be coming in to visit and it's it's, this is going to be a hard moment because we all want to.
There's actually a lot of discussion in my family and uh, you know, I have a daughter who's working on her PhD, Houston Berkeley. She's not going to be flying over Thanksgiving. It just uh, doesn't seem like uh, sadly, to to be the thing uh, to do, uh, given that the quarantine are necessary and tests and all of that. And uh, as you point out, they'll, they're likely to be heightened travel. This disease is so prevalent now throughout the entire country that I think the risks of not getting it during holiday holiday travel are are pretty low. Uh, I can't imagine sitting in an airplane for three or four hours traveling coast to coast, breathing uh, air with people packed, no middle seats open and and whatnot. So at least in our family, don't think we're going to be gathering, which is truly sad because for about twenty-five years we've gathered with uh, family and extended family uh, in Vermont to celebrate. It's something we always look forward to. So you know, I, I personally feel the loss of that and uh, I know many others in our community will feel the loss of not seeing their loved ones. Others will try to manage to get together with family and, you know, again, please, you know, follow the guidelines and the precautions. If you're traveling in from out of state, you are required to uh, you know, be quarantined until you get a negative test after three days. You have to be quarantined for at least three days, no matter where you travel from. The only exceptions are contiguous states in New York. Um, and that's due to the fact that people commute. Uh, but I still think it's a good idea if you're traveling from Pennsylvania, even though it's a contiguous state in New York, that uh, if you travel to Long Island, you really should follow those recommendations. Stay quarantined away from your family members for at least three days. Get get a negative test before you start uh, you know, uh, being uh, less careful. Uh, so you know, it's a, it's an important point, Jeff. Uh, I don't think we can over emphasize it. Um, and you know, everybody has to make those decisions for themselves. We ask for cooperation to keep our community healthy. And you know, for the health of our community that you continue to follow those protocols to be able to help us keep businesses open. Uh, you know, to not go backwards. It's been painful getting to this point uh, where we could be as open as we are and we're still not obviously back to normal. But to go back to shutdown is um, it's just hard to kind of imagine at this point. And you know, we just continually ask that you please do everything you can to keep us from going any further backwards. Uh, I see us responding in reverse. Um, if we continue to get negative news, um, I've by order yesterday, I closed the Fall Sports, the rec department was uh, sponsoring out of an abundance caution. You know, if we keep going, the next step will be closing down skate parks and other public facilities that might be open at this time. I I see us walking back the same direction we walked forward out of the pandemic, only in reverse. Um, you know, to be able to address the spread and try and reduce it. So everybody's cooperation is really important. Uh, I know, I know this is hard. It's, it's uh, creates a lot of anxiety and and stress for everyone. So uh, just asking you be patient. We'll get through this. It's, you know, we can see the light of the end of the tunnel is coming and it's not a train. It's just going to take some time.
Meanwhile, I think there's going to be uh, fewer hugs this Thanksgiving.
Yeah, well, if I could make a couple of points, one is I know a number of colleges and universities are testing the students before they come home. I also, I heard a new phrase coined. It's called Zoom giving. So our parent, you know, I know our family, we're just going to be the four of us and uh, and I hear that a lot from from friends and family. And then the question, Peter, I don't know if the hospital has made any overtures, will they be, you know, as time goes on, increasing the availability of testing out here? Because I know at the hospital, there's a long lead time to to get a test. You can't go the next day, you know, appointments are booked out. Sometimes days or a week in advance and there are only a handful of physicians that are doing the testing. And I guess that's the next step was we may need to um, employ those parking lot testing centers once again.
That, you know, testing has always been in short supply and frankly, the county has not provided the resources that I've requested continually due to that we've also been very effective at keeping our infection numbers low. Our total infection rate to date, the last number I saw was three hundred and twenty-four cases within the town of East Hampton since March eighth, I believe was the first case, March eighth or tenth. Three hundred and twenty-four was the most recent number I saw. Obviously, some cases are getting missed, but compared to uh, other towns, you know, Southampton's almost fourteen hundred. And just by comparison, uh, countywide, there were three hundred and twenty-four cases. Coincidentally, the same number that we've had through the entire pandemic, just in a single day, countywide. So you know, that's, that's been a a mixed blessing. It's been a blessing in that we haven't had that many cases. On the other hand, we're not a hotspot and with testing being, you know, limited, uh, it's been very difficult. We've had some success in getting temporary um, testing locations set up at four hundred peanut or three, yeah, I guess it was four hundred peanut go place parking lot uh, in conjunction with the East Hampton Health Care Foundation. Uh, working with Southampton Hospital, we got the site in Montauk, at Montauk School up and running. Uh, which later moved back to East Hampton due to the more centralized location. Uh, that's ongoing, but again, you know, it's been challenging trying to get additional testing sites here locally on the South Fork. Southampton's run into the same issue. There is a testing site in Riverhead as well. Um, so there are some options and if you need to know locations of possible testing uh, sites within the area, you can contact um, three one one for the county uh, and ask for that information or you check our website.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a comment uh, about Kathy's statement that um, I've uh, read that um, some of the New York State schools, they are testing before they're letting kids come home. And then they're enforcing a rule that they have to then stay home and learn remotely. So there is concern, you know, that this movement of people over the holiday. So there is concern, you know, that this movement of people over the holidays has to be limited because we're, we are seeing, we're seeing a sharp rise in our numbers, which is.
Well, what many colleges and universities did was they rearranged their schedule. They brought kids back earlier, canceled all three day weekends and fall breaks and actually the semester ends by Thanksgiving. And then what I know for my daughter, so her last day of classes is November eighteenth. And then they don't go back until February twenty-second. They've extended it almost like trimesters in order to.
A lot of schools have done that, colleges and some private schools due to the concern about travel over Thanksgiving and infecting everybody between the holidays. So.
Or coming back and infecting the student body.
And I read, I read in one of the governor's statements that many of the state schools are requiring remote learning when, after the kids come home, requiring them to stay home and do remote.
Whether or not they actually stay home is of concern. You know, some of the recent cases, the outbreak in the high school was related to college kids coming home and then mingling with high school students and and I think there were fifteen cases traced to that. So, you know, you see how quickly the disease can spread in certain environments, mostly social gatherings. So that's why is, as painful as it is not to be with other people after this period of time, we just need to stay vigilant for everybody's health. So. Anything else on COVID? Move on to rest of my report. Okay. Let's see, that brings us up to solar. So we have a January start date for the solar installation on Parks Building. NIPA required some additional, I guess, agreement to be written up regarding the three hundred thousand dollar grant award for battery storage. As the board members know, that was a really important component. But allow us to store energy from the solar roof, use that saw offset peak demand or, and we could actually be involved with with arbitrage where we could sell back energy at the highest rate when needed. We did, we did get the warranty, necessary warranty inspection, which the roof passed prior to the solar being installed. That was something we had waited on, trying to get a representative from the the roof manufacturer to actually come out during COVID that delayed it. So at this point, I've initiated those documents, have signed them and we have a start date in January. Again, moves us closer to our hundred percent renewable energy for town hall buildings. We're well on our way. We need to keep moving forward with that and hopefully get the rest of our community to take advantage of the ongoing Solarize East Hampton. Personally, I've put solar on my roofs and my electric bill is about two hundred and twenty dollars a month and it's eleven dollars a month now. Half of that savings goes towards paying off the solar roof. And the other half goes in my pocket. So I also get satisfaction knowing that I'm pumping additional green energy back out onto the grid as my roof produces more than my annual needs. You can take advantage of that too. Please go to the website and look up Solarize East Hampton. We have, I have an update for you on the emergency communications. And that is that the Pantico Tower is completed, Wayne Scott is completed. The town police headquarters is completed. The Montauk One Tower is complete, Montauk Two. The engineering is complete. The bids, we accepted, I believe, on the fifth. The NYAC side of the microwave length is due in March. And that's the last thing outstanding. The system wide cutover has already begun. In October, the testing, the major cutover should be completed this month. And final acceptance of the system, February of twenty-one. So COVID did cause some delays, but not significant. It's kind of, it was kind of almost a wash because while some manufacturers were delayed, some contractors found space in their schedule and were able to complete ahead of schedule. So we're on track to get that completed and finalized early twenty-one. The system's already being cut over. Let's see, State Highway one twenty-seven in Montauk from East Lake to Town. I've had reports of a number of large potholes forming in that section. There is, I believe, spring will be the repaving of that stretch, but forwarded those concerns about potholes that I received from community members in Montauk to the state DOT. I'm hoping that they've fixed those by now with the warm weather. They can do hot patch and those patches should hold much longer than if they wait till the weather gets colder and do a cold patch. I met with Vinnie Guardiola and Joanne Powell. Vinnie's our engineer who we've hired to work on UR maps and road assignments. And Joanne Powell, as you know, is our director of planning. There are concerns about the UR maps and those assignments. The assignment units haven't been updated in terms of cost per unit in the last seventeen years. So we're working on trying to come up with a number that better reflects the actual costs of units. We've had some recent cases of people who've gotten estimates and assignments and bonded for that work. And when they go out to bid, the lowest bids come back in some cases twice what the bond amount is. And while if you're a wealthy person, that might not be a big deal. If you're person who's just marginally being able to develop an affordable house for yourself, that can be kind of a catastrophic surprise. Beyond that, the entire system of UR maps being brought into the highway system has not resulted in success. And there are very few examples of roadways within UR maps that actually get adopted by the highway. The idea was that as each parcel develops, they contribute assignments towards improving the roadway. The first ones and obviously be clearing and grading. Next, they might do some paving and drainage and whatnot until over time, those, those properties develop, the roadways completed, it's part of the system. In practice, what happens is by the time the last roads, last properties develop, those first improvements are in need of complete redo after twenty years, in some cases or more. So we have a number of roadways. There are substandard private roads that not likely to be accepted into the highway system unless they meet the highway spec. Town Board acted a number of years ago in one UR map to do a map wide special road district whereby all the property owners, when majority of whom voted to create the district. The, the road improvements throughout the district were made all at once, up to town spec and adopted in the highway system. And those assessments for the total cost were divided among the property owners and paid on their tax bill over the next twenty years. In many cases, this is a rather modest additional cost. And certainly, we know that in years where we get major snowfall, just the cost of plowing private roads probably offsets the additional cost on their tax bill in those years, certainly. Not to mention that having a clean paved pothole free road does improve the value of your property. I just want to make the public aware that if you live in an old file UR map and you're concerned about not getting your roads plowed or the maintenance of the roads not taking place. There is a method and means, you need to get together with your neighbors and talk about bringing the entire map into the system or your roadway into the system. We also have another private road that I know the board's been working on, Pheasant Woods Lane, I believe it is, where the property owners have agreed to do that. We're, we've just gone out for final engineering, I believe, with L K McLean to do the final spec and ultimately that work will get done. But in the short term, we do need to come up with the different assignment unit number that better reflects reality. We've been moving forward on CDCH building, post mold remediation assessment, looking at what needs to be done to the building to bring it back to be occupied and benefit the community and working towards that. We've met, I know David, you've been involved with me directly, buildings and grounds as well to take a look and make that assessment. Look at the internet Wi-Fi needs, IT needs for the building. There had been some neglect of the grounds. That's been resolved. It all looks great over there. The guys did a great job cleaning it up. And so we're looking at the next steps. There are a number of classrooms and rooms within the building that need new acoustic tile ceilings as those were removed for mold remediation. The board will recall that we bonded five hundred thousand dollars, bring that building back up. We were able to purchase the property at greatly reduced low market value. And ultimately, I would like to see that building used for community use. There's a lot of synergy, I believe, between the existing ball fields, the future baseball fields and other uses that can occur on that location. Whether it be childcare on the building, within the building or arts and entertainment, office space, business incubator, there are a number of potential uses that we could put this building to use. For. We had we had some erosion the last couple of storms along the beachfront, you know, the bags in the emergency stabilization project, some of the toe, toe of those bags are showing in certain locations in Montauk. Not terrible just yet, but you know, we are into the erosion season. There's a huge scarp at Beach Lane going eastwards toward the jetties and where the pond's now being let. It's only a single track at the foot of the dune. There's about a, I don't know, five to seven foot scarp there. There's been some scarps in other locations where the, the sand's been removed. So. We, we lost part of the Lowenstein Court staircase. Tony Littman just sent me a photograph. I think he must have texted it to me because I don't see it. He was going to share it in my email, but it's not in the email. But those staircases run directly towards the water and what's happened is at low tide, the water's still lapping at that location. Took out, there's quite a drop there. So from the landing, we did a right angle turn on the staircase. So that's been, that's been repaired. So Lowenstein Court, court access, I believe, is now back open to the public. I think that's just about it. I just want to state that tomorrow is Veterans Day. And I want to acknowledge that today in the meeting and thank all of our veterans, whether they're watching or not, or all of your service to our country. Your dedicated service means that we do have a democracy still in our country. And I don't, I think that's really an amazing sacrifice that all of you have taken on, on our behalf, on behalf of our democracy. And I, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. On behalf of the town board and our whole entire community, I know that we normally would gather on Veterans Day and acknowledge folks. I'm not sure that that's going to happen this year in the traditional way that we would gather. No parades. But I, I think it's really important to remember all those throughout our country's history have served and are currently serving in our armed forces. So I want to thank you all. And if you see a veteran or know a veteran, call them up. Zoom with them, thank them. Thank them for their service. Do we have any other comments before we go to resolutions? We have any callers on the line, Michael?
No, we do not.
We'll move on to resolutions. Kathy?
Resolution twenty twenty ten sixty-five is to amend resolution twenty twenty eight twenty-six. Authorized funds for social media. We recognize that the social media platforms required that boosted posts be paid by credit card at the time of the booking. So the first round of posts were placed on the town's credit card and the second round were booked by Berlin Rosen. So they need to be reimbursed.
All in favor? Aye, pass and carry.
Like offer resolution twenty twenty ten sixty-six is the Sack Harbor Stormwater Abatement Design and Budget Modification. This is pretty much for onsite construction administration, observation costs, not to exceed five thousand dollars. It's a budget modification. Five thousand dollars there and then also for fifteen hundred dollars, which will be paid using existing remaining unused funds for a total of sixty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty ten sixty-seven is a local law adopting an affordable housing overlay district. In addition to the existing A three zoning for six and two ninety three mile harbor, it meets all the standards for its location within an affordable housing overlay district. And I know that this is a zoning change that the housing authority has been eagerly awaiting.
I think we have to just amend that. It's two eighty-six and two ninety. It's written correctly below, but just not in the headline.
Do we have a second as amended?
Second as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Resolution ten sixty-eight is to amend resolution twenty twenty nine eighty-three provisional appointment for Rebecca Hanson, whereas the town has determined that adding this title of temporary position best meets the immediate needs of the finance department works to create a logical succession plan in twenty twenty. Therefore, resolve Rebecca Hanson's pointed to the title of deputy town budget officer for six months, period, beginning October twenty-sixth. And the reason we're doing this is because if we don't do it as a temporary position, we become a permanent town position, which we would have to keep. And ultimately, what we'd like to do is to just keep the, but the existing budget officer, chief budget officer position and fill, backfill Charlene's original title, which was chief financial auditor. Rather than add a third position that we're not likely to really want to fill long term. So it's just for the transitional period. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Ten sixty-nine is accept the proposal RFP EH twenty twenty one oh six. Wireless telecommunications facility consulting services, and that goes to Cityscape Consultants. And that would be allowing the town supervisor to hereby authorize and directed to enter into agreement with Cityscape Consultants for the provision of services consistent with contractor's response to the request proposal. Set agreement is subject to the review and approval of town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Twenty twenty ten seventy is to waive permanent fees for Brooks Park Cottage relocation. And that's effective November tenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
We have discussion on this, please? I understand that ordinarily, I would, you know, vote in favor of waiving fees, but as the board knows, I'm working on trying to straighten out the agreement managing the Brooks Park property. John Jill Nicky's helping me with a legal issue on that and I don't want to vote in favor of anything that mentions relocating the structure. Don't want to vote in favor of anything that mentions relocating structures which these, this permit fee is for. Um, until after we've had a full opportunity to get that, um, site up and running and work on preserving those, the structure. So I. Asked the board not to vote on it because it's, I think it's premature at this point. I did speak.
I understand, I understand your position, but I'll remind the board that this has already been through the planning. Board review for the site location. The, uh, future potential site, uh. Uh, manager has asked that we waive these fees. And if in fact you are successful in your efforts, Jeff, this will become a moot point because I think we would all like to see it stay where it is. But this would just effectuate its lo- relocation if in fact. You're not successful. And can you give us any kind of an update as to? What's transpired since February?
Well, um. There as, there was a legal issue that you, you raised, Peter, um, and that had been, uh, uh.
Actually, not a legal issue I raised. It was a legal issue that was raised by community members regarding.
Well, you, you raised it, Peter, uh, in the context of asking to, to.
Actually, Jeff, I'm gonna disagree with you. I did not raise this issue, but it's not an issue we could ignore.
It's, that's an issue that I'm working on and, uh, John is helping me and I'd like to see if we can resolve that. I've spoken to somebody who is interested. In taking over as a licensee. I've reached out to the art community and. Some of the better known and more philanthropic, uh, people involved in the art community that have. Worked on some, uh, notable projects here and in SAG Harbor. And I'm doing my best to find somebody that can take this over and get it back.
Well, we do hope you're successful, um, but in, until, uh, we hear otherwise, this, uh. Again, doesn't commit the, the town to. Joe anything or pressure anyone to move forward in any one direction, but. It would just take care of that issue. So it's resolved even when. That structure needs to be relocated.
Well, let's have a roll call because I'm gonna just.
So, uh. Again, the planning board, I believe, approved that location, that site location. We'll have a vote. Roll call vote, please, girl.
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez? I couldn't hear that.
Aye.
Councilman Lee?
I vote aye because this is not for demolition, but it's still for the relocation of that historical structure. So it's not being demolished. So I vote aye.
Councilwoman Overby?
Aye.
Councilman Bradman?
Aye.
Supervisor Vance Goyet?
Aye. Again, this resolution is to waive fees if in fact, uh, Mr. Bradman's unsuccessful. So passing.
We're patiently waiting. Almost eight years, but patiently waiting.
Some of those years were your years, Peter, not.
Most of, most of those years were mine, Jeff, and, and I'll just remind, uh, anybody who's watching that. Uh, being unable, uh, in this particular case, I think four out of five is pretty good for historical preservation efforts. Uh, but the, the town property management committee recommended to this board that demolition of those structures take place. And the town board was on the verge of voting to approve that measure. Uh, when we had some members of the community step forward and say. Please just wait a little bit longer. Uh, I'm willing, I was willing to do that. The rest of the board was willing to do that. That happened in February. We've gotten the, no movement on that at all. Um, in a positive direction in the intervening months and, and, you know. We're still patiently waiting. Uh, I, I, again, I really truly hope you're successful, uh, where I was not, um. But I don't know that we can wait, uh. Forever, so.
Um, I make a motion to go into exec session for contracts, litigation personnel. Um, it is now three fourteen.
Uh, three forty-five. Folks, a chance to eat lunch and come back when I'll send the link.
Okay, thank you.
Five, thank you very much, everyone. Stay safe, be well. Wash your hands, wear masks, socially distanced, thank a veteran.